Good afternoon, welcome to the September 26, 2006 meeting of the Glendale Housing Authority, beginning at 2:37 PM. May we have the roll call, please?
Authority members Najarian, here. Razian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yusefian.
Here.
Chairman Menuchaen, Vice Chairman Cee.
Here. May we have your report, please?
The agenda for the September 26, 2006 regular meeting of the Glendale Housing Authority was posted on Thursday, September 21, 2006, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Do we have minutes? Laura?
I move for a.
Second.
You can't second.
Now, you have an abstention.
Was that one more?
You and Mr. Yusefian.
I withdraw my second.
Other than that, we'll consider the minutes approved as submitted.
With my extension, Mr. Weaver.
What is next, please?
Next is oral communication. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Members of the Housing Authority may question or respond to a speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The matter may be referred to staff through the Executive Director for Investigation and Report.
I do not see any cards. Closing. Oral communications is closed. What's next, please?
Next is Authority member staff comments.
Mr. Yusefian.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. This afternoon, I did receive a call from news press asking if there was an audit conducted by the federal government, and apparently there's $100,000 that they were not able to account for. It is my assumption that the staff is working with the Audit Committee, trying to find out.
We got a report on this on our desk.
Oh, we didn't get that report.
Yeah, I went back to my desk.
Oh, you did? Okay, so it's on your desk. So could you kind of tell us? Because I have feeling it's going to be in the news press tomorrow.
It's already in the daily news.
Yes, Councilman Yusefian and members of the Housing Authority, we have been working closely with our internal audit division, with OIG, and with Los Angeles Housing Service Authority to resolve some questionable issues. They have been working very positively with us. We have every confidence we're going to be able to resolve those issues. But it was a formal audit, and there were formal findings, and we're in the process of resolving those findings. I think we have until December to resolve the audit, then November to resolve the audit.
And if the issues are not resolved, then who is responsible for refunding the feds? Is it us, or is it the organization we gave the money to?
Well, we're ultimately responsible as the Housing Authority. We're ultimately responsible. We can go after the organization. But as I say, we've been working closely with our Finance Division. It has to do with how the match is calculated, as well as an administrative plan that's acceptable to OIG. So we're working on that.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Move to adjourn.
We are adjourned.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Glendale Redevelopment Agency of September 26, 2006. May we have a roll call for Agency, please?
Agency members Menuchaen, Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Chairman Yusefian.
Here. May we have your report, please?
The agenda for the September 26, 2006 regular meeting of the Glendale Redevelopment Agency was posted on Thursday, September 21, 2006, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
What's next, please?
Approval of minutes? Is there a motion?
I'll move the minutes. Just a second.
There's a motion, a second roll call.
Agency members Menuchaen, Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Chairman Yusefian.
Abstain. What's next, please?
Oral communication. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Members of the Redevelopment Agency may question or respond to a speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The matter may be referred to staff through the Executive Director for Investigation and Report.
Okay. I have no cards. Oral communications closed. What's next, please?
Next is Agency member staff comments.
Hearing none. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We're adjourned. Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I need to be going, so just wanted to let you know.
Okay. I sing you again.
Okay. See you tonight.
Is it bar the way or releasing?
I don't think I have any authority to keep him here.
Release the prisoner.
Well, welcome to a shortened meeting of the... Welcome. Had to get in before he got out the door. Okay, like to call or order a joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority. May we have a roll call for City Council?
Council members Menuchaen, Najarian.
Here.
Quintero. Yusefian. Mayor Weaver.
Here.
And for the Housing Authority?
Authority members Najarian.
Here.
Razian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yusefian. Chairman Menuchaen. Vice Chairman Cee.
Here.
May we have your report?
The agenda for the September 26, 2006 joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority was posted on Thursday, September 21, 2006, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next, please?
On today's agenda for this joint public meeting is Director of Community Development and Housing regarding Glendale's homeless continuum of care, 10-year strategy to end chronic homelessness. At 1A's council motion approving the 10-year plan and authorizing city manager to submit the strategy to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. That won't be authority motion approving 10-year plan and authorizing city manager to submit the strategy to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Go to Mr. Starbird, who's going to go to Mrs. Blake. Who's going to go to Buckstop's there?
I'm going to give some, just some introductory comments. You recently, I'm sure, have seen quite a bit of press about the homeless. Skid Row strategies. Last week, there was a press release that Mayor Viragosa allocated a large number of Section 8 vouchers to homeless agencies that provide services for homeless. A lot of this is evolving out of HUD's mandate that all communities develop a 10-year strategy to end homelessness. HUD's priority at this time is addressing the needs of the homeless. The continuum of care, which go back actually to Andrew Cuomo, they've been in place now for about over 10 years, and they have, the continuum have been very successful. I think Glendale is a good example. Those, many, many of those people who have been willing and want to help themselves, who have been either at risk or are homeless, have taken advantage of services, have participated in Project Achieve and their services, and have gone through the continuum and are into housing. What most communities are facing is the issue of the chronic homeless. Those are the most difficult to serve. Those are the people we see on the streets. The majority of them have either some type of addiction and/or mental health problems, are in need of some type of service and medication, and it's a very, very difficult population. And consequently, HUD has prioritized this population and has mandated that all communities put together some strategies for how they're going to address the population. And that's what's before you today. The homeless coalition has been in place since 1990. We're very fortunate in this community to have excellent service providers. Captain James Sloan has been the chair of that coalition up until recently, and that position has been taken over by Maggie Willis, who is the manager now of Project Achieve. About a year ago, the Housing Authority approved a change of contract, moving from the Institute for Urban Research and Design to, who withdrew from the contract, approving PATH as the provider. PATH has tremendous capacity. I put at your place, the magazine that they just put out, they are probably the most expert at providing services to the homeless. We're really fortunate that they have taken over now the Project Achieve and a number of the supportive services. Interestingly, Glendale, Long Beach, Pasadena, Santa Monica, all have their own continuum of care, from outreach services all the way through to permanent housing. Los Angeles City, under Mayor Viragosa, has set up this fairly high-power task force with the county CAO, the mayor's chief deputy, and department representatives from those organizations who have their own continuum. Los Angeles City and Los Angeles County, they have a joint powers agreement under LSA, and LSA is responsible for delivering services, basically, to the rest of LA City and LA County. And there are, they have a lot of challenges. As I say, we are fortunate to have our own continuum, and they are challenged with how they're going to deal with Skid Row, how they're going to provide services to the rest of LA County. In the meantime, each of us who has our own continuum continues to provide the services and to continue to strengthen the supportive housing programs within the communities. And clearly, we are doing our fair share, so to speak, to provide services to the homeless. We have a brief presentation to talk with you today about the strategy to end homelessness in 10 years. Very ambitious, not very realistic, but it's been an effort that's been underway for the last couple of years. And so with that, I'd like just to briefly go through that.
Comment, this is the chronic homelessness is what the President's directive is, right?
Yes, chronic homeless.
There's a paragraph in here that explains what chronic homelessness is. Can somebody read that in so the public knows what it means? I can read it or somebody else. There's a difference between being homeless and chronically.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's a good point. I will talk about the HUD definition of chronic homeless distinct from the more general homeless population as part of the presentation.
Okay.
And, Ms. Mayor Weaver, members of City Council, Vice Chairman Cee, and members of the Housing Authority, what we are talking about today is adding a focus to our existing continuum of care structure, which, as Madam pointed out, and I think members of the homeless coalition, many of whom are here today, would agree we've been pretty successful at and probably done more than our fair share in the region. But what HUD is saying is that they would like communities across country to focus more on the chronic homeless population, which, as Madam pointed out, are the hardest to serve and historically, obviously, have been the most service-resistant to entering continuums of care. So we're talking about some new elements to a strategy, which I'm going to ask Maggie Willis to elaborate on. As Madam pointed out, Maggie is the Associate Executive Director of PATH, and she is in charge of the Glendale, Achieve Glendale, our access center and homeless shelter. And so Maggie and her group are on the front lines, and they could speak very intelligently to what's really going on with the homeless population. So Maggie's going to share this presentation with me. But I'll start off talking a little bit about the, what the mandate is, our current continuum of care, and how we plan to shift to add a component to try to more effectively deal with the chronic homeless population. So as Madam pointed out, in 2003, the Bush administration established a national goal to end chronic homelessness in 10 years. It's a very ambitious goal, and it specifically targets the chronic homeless. So there is a movement throughout the country, as Madam pointed out, LA City, Skid Row, LA County, everyone's trying to focus on the chronic homeless population. So communities were challenged to develop, adopt, and implement local 10-year strategies to effectively address the needs of the very special population of the chronic homeless. And communities that develop strategies will remain competitive for continuum funding. Since 2003, federal funding by HUD has increasingly been geared towards programs that fund permanent housing for chronically homeless persons. So we would like to stay ahead of that curve and would like a 10-year strategy adopted. In terms of the target population, chronic homeless persons are the most visible. They're the hardest to reach. They tend to be service-resistant for some very good reasons. They use up a disproportionate share of resources, whether it's funding resources or local emergency response resources, such as police, EMT, hospitals. They absorb a disproportionate share of those resources. Based on our 2006 point-in-time count on any given night in Glendale, approximately 31% of Glendale's overall homeless population is characterized as in that chronic homeless category. That translates to 89 out of 289 homeless persons in Glendale. HUD's definition of chronic homelessness is a single individual, not a family, but a single individual possessing a diagnosable disability, and a person who is homeless for one year or more, or has experienced four episodes of homelessness in the last three years. That's HUD's definition of the chronic homeless. In terms of Glendale's response, we, the coalition established a committee, called the Committee to Address Chronic Homelessness, or CATCH. CATCH members held quarterly strategy sessions for two and a half years and developed a 10-year strategy to end chronic homelessness, which we have submitted before you today. The coalition approved Glendale's 10-year strategy on August 3, or at least approved the recommendation to request approval from the Housing Authority and City Council in August. Besides Glendale, communities and continuums with already approved 10-year strategies include Pasadena, Long Beach, the City of LA, Orange County, Riverside, and Oxnard. And I think Santa Monica is about as far along as we are getting their 10-year strategy The list of CATCH members is extensive. It includes most of the key service providers in Glendale, again, including those that are at the front lines, and including a couple of homeless alumni that gave us input on the practicality of a strategy. So Glendale's, or the goal for Glendale's 10-year strategy is that it be based on the core values and mission of Glendale's existing continuum of care, which includes the efficient use of community resources, implementation of a comprehensive housing and supportive service programming designed to holistically meet the needs of consumers, and the commitment to focusing on client self-sufficiency. That's always the ultimate goal, is the self-sufficiency of the clients. Their other goal is to expand on existing components of the continuum, and of course, introduce new programs which would target the very specific needs of the chronic homeless. Then these are the elements of the flow chart of the continuum. And by definition of a continuum, it begins at the very basic level of outreach, intake, and assessment, which all takes place at the, our point of entry, which is Achieve Glendale. And our second point of entry would be the YWCA's Domestic Violence Center. The next step would be emergency shelter with supportive housing, transitional housing, permanent housing, and homeless prevention and support services. The continuum infrastructure then is comprised of education, prevention outreach, supportive services, employment services, emergency housing, transitional, and permanent supportive housing. And all components are intimately linked with comprehensive case management services throughout the continuum to successfully move clients from homelessness to permanent In terms of prevention, obviously, a part of the strategy is to try to prevent homelessness from ever occurring in the first place. So we, part of our continuum is case management for households at risk of becoming homeless. We have a program administered by Catholic Charities, where Catholic Charities provides preventive case management and emergency one-time rental and utility financial assistance. The city operates an short-term rental assistance program called Emergency Rental Assistance Program, which are based on referrals that we receive from these service providers. And it's short-term, meaning anywhere between three months to six months. So these are families that do have the means of providing for their own rent, but for one reason or another, have run into a temporary situation where they need help. Catholic Charities and Salvation Army provide food pantries, and they will serve anywhere between 800 and 1,000 families a month with food. The rental assistance program will serve about 100 families a year, and the case management program will serve about 200 families a year. Then in terms of outreach, intake, and assessment, we have a street outreach team that is supervised by Achieve Glendale, and they will make about 1,000 contacts a year, trying to draw, again, probably for them, they probably come in most contact with chronic homeless, and so they will, they'll see the same persons time and time and time again, with the ultimate goal of eventually gaining their trust and drawing them into the point of entry and the continuum. But they'll make about 1,000 contacts a year. They're the teams that business persons or anyone would call when they notice homeless persons lingering around establishments. We conduct an annual homeless resources, resource fair, and we will serve about 100 clients that way. We provide health outreach and treatment. There is a clinic in the service center, the access center, that will treat about 100 homeless persons per year with direct treatment in the service center. And we have a domestic violence outreach project, which is a 24-hour hotline, and they will also make about 1,000 contacts a year. In terms of the emergency housing, again, we have the Achieve Glendale Shelter, and they will serve about 100 persons a year. This is a 40-bed housing facility where families are able to stay up to 60 days at a time. We have Sunrise Village Domestic Violence Shelter, run by the YWCA. They have 10 beds. We have the Winter Shelter Program, which last year saw 786 unduplicated persons go through that program. We have a motel voucher program operated by Glendale Adventist Medical Center. They have about 20 vouchers that they issue a year, which is not a big number. But Salvation Army also has a voucher program, and the numbers that they're able to give out vary. I don't have that stat. I know they have access to 1,000 vouchers, but I don't know how many of them will end up in Glendale. In terms of transitional housing, we've got, we have five projects. We have a project, a scattered site project run by Achieve Glendale, that will serve 12 families. We have the Nancy Painter House, run by Salvation Army. They have four beds, and will serve four families at a time. We have Hamilton Court, also run by the YWCA, and which is for families which are victims of domestic violence, and they have 10 beds. We have Freedom House, which is for single women only, and they will serve, or they have 10 beds. And we have a partnership with the City of Pasadena and Union Station, and they reserve seven beds in their Euclid Villa project for Glendale residents, and that's for homeless families. And these transitional housing projects are transitional because families stay a maximum of 24 months in most cases, and then by then, it's hoped that they would have received enough case management and avail themselves to the services that we have to be able to move on to self-sufficiency or permanent housing situations. The next step in the continuum is permanent supportive housing, and the distinction between permanent supportive housing and transitional is permanent does not have any limitations on tenure. So once you get into a permanent supportive housing unit, you can stay on until you become self-sufficient. And we have a shelter-plus-care program, which is operated by the Glendale Housing Authority. Shelter-plus-care works very much like the Section 8 program in that it involves a voucher, which is issued to clients. It's based on referrals from continuum members or coalition members. To be eligible for a shelter-plus-care voucher, you must be disabled. We will find the units on behalf of the clients, obviously, because they're homeless and don't have their own units, which would be distinct from the Section 8 program. The eligibility criteria obviously would be a little bit more lenient in the Section 8 program, because these are families that do have issues and are experiencing problems. And the major caveat is that these families must maintain supportive services and must stay on their case management plan, and if they fall off, they will be terminated from the program. We also have next step, permanent supportive housing, which is operated by PATH. That's eight units, and as for persons with substance abuse issues, the shelter-plus program is 37 units of vouchers. We have a permanent housing for chronic homeless program, again, operated by PATH. This is a new program. This is only one of two programs designed for chronic homeless currently in our continuum, and that's for eight units. We have, under the Section 8 program, like LA City, we do have the ability to give preference to homeless families that are special cases that might be referred to the Section 8 program. And if Section 8 vouchers are available at the time, we could give them a priority status and bring them into permanent housing through Section 8. And we average, this is very selective, we average one or two on an annual basis, but we do have that ability. Then we have the Orange Grove Project, sponsored by West Hollywood Community Housing Corporation. That's a total of 24 units, and again, it's permanent, affordable housing, and they will give preference to homeless families referred by members of the coalition. So we are doing our fair share when it comes to continuum of care and assisting homeless families. The question is if we can do more to specifically target the chronic homeless population. In terms of supportive services, I won't read off the list, but this is a listing of all the services that one would find in the Achieve Glendale Access Center, or that would be referred to, to offices by, to programs that are operated by other members of the In terms of the characteristics of Glendale's chronic homeless population, again, the definition of a chronic homeless person is an unaccompanied homeless adult possessing a disabling condition, and that has been homeless for one consecutive year or four, has experienced four episodes in the last three years. So we have our overall homeless population, based on the 2006 annual point-in-time unduplicated count, is 289 persons. Of that number, 89, or 49%, I'm sorry, of that number, 89, actually, that would be 31%. But you can see the comparison between, in terms of disabling conditions, between those and the general population that have those conditions, and those that are chronic homeless. And a prevalence in homeless, chronic homeless population is much greater than the general population as a whole. Almost half would have some kind of a severe mental illness. 30% would be chronic substance abusers. 10% would have a dual diagnosis. 10% would have a developmental disability. And 47% of the chronic homeless would have a physical disability.
Duran? Are you saying that's how many homeless we approximate are out on the streets now?
Yes.
289.
On any given, on any given night, we count 289 homeless persons in Glendale. These are persons currently in the system, so...
In the system, being helped or to be helped?
That on that particular day are being seen, or where contact was made with our existing service... service providers.
Hey, this doesn't account for the ones that are out there we haven't contacted yet?
Not necessarily, unless they were contacted on that day. Not to be confused with the total number that we would come across for a whole year.
Do we have a number for the average that would be on the streets on a particular night?
Because you're saying these are inside, right? They're not laying out on the street?
Correct, unless there's someone that has.
Because we do see some out in the streets, deep behind the benches.
Okay.
Not all of these people are housed.
Okay, some mix.
Okay, so it, yeah, it does include a number that were on the street on that day.
And people like, the ones that have severe mental illness, there are programs for them?
Well, for example.
And physically disabled, there are programs for them?
There are, are some referrals that can be made from the access center. For example, if we're doing the House Center, is a coalition member, and so we would make linkages with them or other county facilities.
So the programs for how you actually help them are yet to be presented to us at some future time, if we were curious?
Yeah, Maggie's going to touch on the strategies, and part of that will be what the existing gap is. And there are some existing gaps if we are going to make headway into effectively addressing the chronic homeless.
Because if you're physically disabled, you're not going to get cured theoretically, so. Disabled, you stay disabled, so.
Right.
What are you doing with them?
And then there's varying degrees of the physical disability.
Yeah.
Yeah, and again, maybe Maggie can elaborate on that when she talks about the strategies. In fact, this is a good segue. Maggie will take over from here, and she will speak to the barriers to dealing with the homeless population, then relate that to the strategies that have been developed by the homeless coalition.
Good afternoon, Mayor Weaver and city council members and housing authority members. I will address, actually, Mayor, your questions. That's exactly where we're headed. Regarding the barriers to ending chronic homelessness, part of what was deeply considered when the community was building the strategy is what are the special challenges? The challenges that are unique to addressing the needs of people who are chronically homeless? There are, the major barriers are the prevalence of severe mental illness, as you mentioned. Many of them are mentally ill. There are service providers in the community that provide mental health care, but they lack the capacity to house those folks as well, so in an appropriate way. The systems that we have right now, we are experimenting with some housing options for people with mental illness that include our scattered site housing that PATH is operating right now. The eight units that Jess mentioned are targeted towards the chronically homeless with mental illness, specifically to provide intensive case management in their homes to support them. Right now, housing for people with mental illness is extremely limited. They have difficulty staying in that housing. So this was one of the key issues that we have to address. The lack of gateway or need-based housing in the community. There are a lot of programs, as you saw, that provide emergency housing. However, that housing comes with restrictions. It comes with eligibility criteria. It has requirements for being sober and being on medication if required for mental health. There are many people out on the street that simply do not meet that requirement. They cannot be eligible for the available housing that we have. So we have to look at another way of providing adequate, safe, and realistic housing for their needs. The revolving door dilemma. Our system of care is quite complex. There are many, many service providers, and what we're finding is that many of these chronically homeless will go through the system over and over and over again. They never are able to get into that permanent housing unit and stay in that permanent housing unit. So the revolving door is simply the recycling of the same folks through our systems, whether it's our nonprofit homeless services, whether it's city mainstream services, hospitals, emergency rooms, fire, police. There is a sense of repeatedly serving the same people over and over through the course of the years. And the high rate of recidivism, and that speaks to the difficulty of keeping these people housed. Once we are able to place them, for example, in a shelter plus care unit or a Section 8 unit, keeping them housed, helping them in that environment so that they don't return to the streets. Okay, I'm having to. Thank you. Our strategies that we're recommending address directly these specific barriers to helping those that are chronically homeless. Our first component is a public education campaign. It's necessary for us to reach out to the community and help them understand the benefits of providing services for these folks who are most in need. The expansion of street outreach is going to be key. We do have an existing street outreach team right now, but it is not 24/7. And the needs of the folks that are living on the street are obviously 24/7. So we are working to expand our program so that we are available to help police and fire when they encounter people who are homeless. The new integrated comprehensive treatment model program, what we're really looking for is addressing, as you saw in that matrix, people who are chronically homeless have a variety of needs, and their needs are more prevalent than those in the general homeless population. So what we really need to look at is integrating our services in a more complete way so that that one chronically homeless person can have all of those complex issues addressed at once. Because unless we treat the whole person and their whole issues, we are never going to help them break their cyclical cycles of this chronic homelessness. Our other strategy is the First Step Housing Program, and this goes back to the idea of needs-based housing. There is not a program in our system right now that would welcome folks that are the ones that we see on the streets. The Salvation Army programs, the Y programs, the PATH Achieve Glendale programs, those programs are designed for first-time homeless or short-term homeless folks. It's not designed to meet the special needs of those who are chronic and have been on the streets for many, many, many years. The last strategy that we're recommending is new permanent supportive housing options. As a continuum and as a community, we really need to look forward. The key is going to be to create more permanent housing in order to keep people from recycling back through the system. There is a push on the federal level as well. In order for us as a continuum to stay competitive in the, in the housing and urban development funding cycle every year, we have to show that we're making strides towards creating permanent supportive housing options. So we're going to walk through these recommendations in a little more depth. The public education campaign. The service barrier is that the community has legitimate fears of the impact of having additional services in their community. What we want to do to combat that is to create information and make it available for people and address those, those issues head-on. We want to create and distribute a homeless fact sheet so that people understand what the scope of homelessness is. Who is homeless in the city of Glendale? Are those people residents here, or are they coming from other areas? Those are the types of questions we get all the time that we are going to put into a fact sheet so that people can have a clearer understanding of the homeless situation here in Glendale. We want to develop and maintain a coalition website, so we're going to create an access center for information. If people in the community are curious and want to understand, there's a place for them to go to get additional information. We want to do more presentations, similar to this, where we will go and visit different community groups. We'll be coming more to council meetings. We'll be sharing more of the direct experience of serving people who are homeless so that the, the public understands the diversity of the homeless population here in Glendale. We want to conduct extensive community outreach and education into neighborhoods. So when there is talk of expanding services, we want to go in to the community first, the neighborhoods, talk to folks, door-to-door, and really find out what their concerns are and how we can mitigate those concerns before a project has even started. We don't want to, we don't want to create a sense of fear in communities when they hear that there are services being expanded into their area. We want them to understand what the benefits to their community will be in the long run. And then we're, lastly, we're working to establish a PATH, more than just an advisory board, but our PATH Achieve Glendale Agency Board of Directors, which is made, which will be comprised of a majority of Glendale area stakeholders. And then we will build a local advisory board as well to help us with educating folks and getting the word out. The expansion of street outreach. Again, the service barrier is that there are, we receive many, many, many calls from police and fire that involve chronically homeless individuals. They mostly happen at night, in the middle of the night, when no services are open and when our street outreach team is not available. So our proposal is to hire an additional street outreach worker, which we are already doing. PATH Achieve Glendale is committed to that. We have somebody that will be on board in the next week or so, who will be working a late shift, so that he can specifically be available to go out with police and fire when they get calls regarding someone who is chronically homeless. We want to help set that person up at a space, perhaps in the police department or the fire department. We haven't clarified who would be the best place for that, so they can be right there on the spot when that call comes in. And we want to make sure that that outreach worker is equipped with the proper technology to be able to do follow-up for those calls. Just a statistic, I don't know if you all have heard this, but the Glendale Fire Department has advised us that they respond to an average of 300 calls a year that are related to a person who is homeless for medical care. Based on their estimations, an average cost of a, to respond to that call is about $1,100. So if you multiply that by 300 calls a year, you're looking at the city of Glendale spending over $300,000 a year addressing this very issue. So I want to put that out there so it's, so that we understand that the chronically homeless are already utilizing systems of care, but they are utilizing systems of care that don't address their, their primary need. Therefore, we're spending money on them, whether we realize it or not as a community. We're spending money on them through hospitals, emergency rooms, and police and fire calls. The integrated, the integrated and comprehensive treatment model program. Again, nearly half of Glendale's chronic homeless populations are disabled, and they have problems being able to navigate our system of care. So we want to go through and identify who are the main service providers? Who are our partners in this task to end chronic homelessness? Bring them on board. Develop a model that will make it easier for people to navigate the system. We, as a, as service providers, need to be open to the idea of changing the way we do intakes or assessments to help streamline things as we refer clients to one another. And so, and to make sure that the key components, mental health, substance abuse, health care, housing, are all linked together around the individual rather than around the agency's program. So that's the goal. First step housing. Again, there is a distinct lack of existing programming that is attractive or eligible or appropriate for folks that are chronically homeless. What we are proposing to do is to look at developing short-term housing that is based around a very open programming that would allow people to come in off the streets that we don't necessarily have a history on, that would be able to receive intensive case management and move them quickly into appropriate housing. And we want to do this as part of our discharge planning process. It's key in order for us to have a successful program where, when people are getting out of jails and prisons, when people are coming out of the hospital emergency rooms, that they have a place that they can go right away, where they will receive care instead of being returned to the streets. Permanent supportive housing. The service barrier is that there is just a lack of permanent supportive housing that is specific to people who are chronically homeless. We have utilized some different resources that are available to us, but we are still falling short of the need. As you saw, there, there's about 90 people out there that still need some form of permanent supportive housing. So we will continue to use and expand shelter plus care vouchers, and we will target those more towards people who are chronically homeless. And we are also hiring a full-time housing case manager to work specifically with the chronically homeless. PATH is actually committed to, to staff people, both of which are in the hiring process. One will be based in our Achieve Glendale site. One will be based out of the, the PATH main facility just over the river in Los Angeles, but they will be working on clients in Glendale. Both of those people will be committed to helping find appropriate housing for people who are chronically homeless.
May I ask a question of you? On our homeless in Glendale, are we receiving many from Los Angeles that are coming over here?
Generally, it's actually, we've had to, in some cases, refer people outside of Glendale for services. Most of the people that we're seeing are based in the greater Glendale area, whether they are being referred from Burbank or Pasadena, but we haven't seen a huge number, for example, being referred from the Skid Row area.
Okay, is that?
So that concludes the proposed strategy. You know, as I said in the beginning, it is the national goal. It's important that this community adopt a 10-year strategy in order to be competitive, to continue to receive funds for the existing continuum of care. There are a lot of agencies who are here today and who have been involved in the development of this strategy, and so it is presented for your consideration.
We had 182,000 last year. Did we use those dollars to get to this point? Looking at the sheet, last year was 182,000 for chronic homeless lease. Is that what we leased something, or?
Oh, that is one, that's the permanent housing rental program for the chronic homeless. And Maggie, what is the, yeah, the status of that?
That, that contract was one of the ones that was recently transferred to PATH. So we began working on that in July. We do have one unit leased right now, and a gentleman who was a repeat user of the Winter Shelter Program for many years is now permanently housed in an apartment here in Glendale. He has severe mental health issues. He had some immigration issues, and our case manager worked with him to get past those problems. He now has his passport, and he's very excited because he gets to go back and visit his family, whom he hasn't seen in about 15 years.
And that line item, 182,000?
That's used for, basically to, for the support services and to subsidize the rent. And as Maggie said, this project got transferred to PATH when they took over.
Understood. That money was all expended?
I think some of it's probably still there.
It's still being expended. The contract is still up and running, so we have not used it all.
Carryover dollars?
Mm-hmm. So that money will mostly go towards renting the eight units here in Glendale and paying the rent on those properties?
You have another 182,000 this year, so you have the carryover dollars plus what's in the budget for this year.
Correct, so.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Nager?
For Madeline, or Ray, or, I mean, Jesse. What, I presume that the demand for, for assistance is much greater than the supply. What can we do regarding the revolving door and the recidivism? Because I could imagine a situation where you just keep helping the same group of people over and over again, whereas other, potentially, I don't want to call them curable, but other folks for whom the assistance would lead them out of homelessness to a better path maybe have to wait or not be able to use those services, starting from the very, you know, beginning, the temporary housing and then the permanent housing?
Yeah. Councilman Nagerian, that's, it's a good question, members of the housing authority. It is expensive to provide service for the chronic homeless, and that's what this strategy is really all about. It's expending resources, future resources. This is a strategy right now. We don't actually have the funds to do all of this. It would be part of a future proposal to HUD. But it, I don't know, I can't, I can't really guess at how much more it costs to help this population. We have the resources pretty much to help those people who will take the step, pretty much enter into a contractual relationship with Achieve Glendale to help themselves and move through the process. move through the process. These people are much more difficult, but as Maggie said, the fire department has been deliberately tracking what it's costing them to pick people up off the street and take them to the hospital. So, part of the, the goal of this strategy is to get these people off the street. So, it's a, it's a future resource investment for a different population.
So, are there enough resources for those that are committed to the Project Achieve Plan and our homelessness plan to work themselves up through, obtain a job, find some transitional housing and all that? Or do we have folks that are on a waiting list, let's say, or not able to, we just don't have room for them in that program?
There is an overwhelming need for transitional housing, and that's why the focus on our continuum has been on sort of that, focusing on the group of people that are ready and willing and accepting the help as it is right now. That's been our focus, and that's been our success. And there is a wait, a wait time for transitional housing, for especially families. What the difference between that strategy and this strategy towards chronic homelessness is the key to addressing chronic homelessness and the issue of recidivism is permanent housing. Part of the problem that we are seeing with the old system of caring for people who are chronically homeless is that these are, as the mayor mentioned, these are people with disabilities that are not ever going to be able to work full-time, maybe. They're not ever going to be able to hold down full-time, regular jobs and build their careers and afford and keep up with the rising cost of market rate housing. These are people that need a permanent, subsidized, affordable place to live, and that's the key. If we don't provide that, we will continue to see people cycling through emergency shelters, through the winter shelter, back out on the street, paying for a motel here and there. The key really is going to be the permanent housing component.
Okay, so, we're going to eventually put these people in permanent housing with the proper supervisory control in this city, in our residential neighborhoods, and notify all the people surrounding that area, living there, that this group of people that are mentally ill maybe are living next door to them.
That's one way to think about it, but what we've been?
I mean, we've been through cerebral palsy already.
Right. What we are doing right now is working in a slightly different manner, and that is using what we call master leasing. The scattered site program, what that refers to is instead of renting an entire apartment complex, or instead of having, building 65 units with severely mentally ill people in one place, what we do is we rent units in the community, and we support people in those units so that we don't have a huge density of these high-need folks in one part of the community.
If you do that, the supervisory control will be onsite, or it'll be ones where they show up each day and address?
It's a mixture. Our case managers do daily contact and at least weekly home visits, if not more frequent. It's based on the needs of the client. When they first move in, we'll do daily checkups on them, see how they're doing, make sure they're okay, and help them transition into the idea of independent living.
So, if they're mentally disabled to the point where you close the door and you can't afford to turn your back because they're heading off, that will be one kind of case as compared to another one where you can check in them on daily every two or three days?
Right, and that's why we need a variety of options, of housing options. The scattered site works for people that are stable and able to live sort of on their own, that they're either med compliant or they are regularly seeing their mental health work.
It's no different than the cerebral palsy, those then. They have some independence.
Right.
With the proper help.
Right, and that's why part of the strategy is to design an array of housing options. There might be, for example, we might have to do 10 units that are 24-hour care, where there's onsite case manager supervisor 24/7 to make sure that people are safe and stable. So, there's different types of programs that need to be developed. We need to really see what the need is for that 89 folks that are in our community.
So, we will monitor numbers of people periodically so we don't find other communities coming in and dropping off their patients in Glendale for us to take care of?
Absolutely. There's plenty of need here in our own community, and one of the things that we do screen for at intake is where, you know, what is your tie to the Glendale community? Did you, used to live here? Do you have family here? Do you work here? Do you go to church here? Those are the types of things that we look for.
And if they don't have some tie to Glendale, then what do we do with them?
We don't turn anybody away for lack of a Glendale connection, but when we're placing people into these permanent supportive housing programs, you know, one of the things we want to do is give priority to people who have Glendale ties.
So, another city could come in here and keep dropping their patients in Glendale, knowing that we'll spend our tax dollars and the federal government's tax dollars to take care of them here, right? Potentially.
Well, potentially, they could, but part of our strategy too, in building a stronger community coalition here, is to make sure that we partner with other communities so that they don't do that. If we build trust with them, if we work with them into our system so that they understand that, yes, we can help them, but it's going to cost them something. We are working on that now to create those kind of partnerships so that we encourage communities, if they're going to do that, then they need to share resources.
As Madeline said, us and a few other cities do have a continuum care now, so my concern is the communities that don't, that all of a sudden will decide to find one of our communities two at one time.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I might, and that's an interesting point, this task force that Mayor Baragosa has pulled together, county supervisor, former county supervisor Ed Edelman is on this, and?
Yeah, I listened to them yesterday.
Been around quite a long time.
I got conference talking.
They, they're less interested in putting more burden on the existing continuum. They're very interested in getting communities that aren't currently providing their fair share to step up to the plate, and that's where the county and the city are going to be focusing their efforts. They recognize that those of us who have a continuum, have our continuum, we are doing our fair share, if not more than our share. So, they're not really focusing on, well, look, Glendale and Pasadena, they've got a good continuum, we'll just bring our people there. They're really focusing on getting the other communities to step up to the plate and start providing services.
Well, you're going to be back four times a year, so we'll find out how that's going, eh?
Hey.
Mr. Quintero?
As part of your intake process, and then specifically when you're ready to place people into housing, do you check for child molestation, convictions, that sort of thing? Is that part of your process?
Currently, for our housing program, we do not do background checks. We have a screening process where they have to meet with three different caseworkers before they're allowed entry into our emergency housing program. And for our shelter programs, it's, they have to have gone through the same intake process. So, through that process, through understanding and building trust with that person, they will disclose to us if they have felonies and things like that. We have not.
Does that comply with state law? I mean, is that the way the law reads, that someone who's a convicted child molester, is my understanding, had to, had to not only register but let the neighbors know?
If they're registered, we do, as part of the intake, check that registry site, the Megan's Law site, to see if their name appears on it. But we don't run a formal background check on them.
Mr. Starbuck, your hand up.
Well, I, Mr. Mayor, in follow-up to the earlier question you'd asked, I was going to ask directly, because the perception is if you run programs, other communities, you know, drop off their residents in your community, as L.A. City was experiencing. Do we experience much of that in Glendale from what we know?
We've not had a problem with, you know, quote-unquote dumping of people who are homeless. We do see people from other parts of the area, just because they have gone to other areas and they're either violent or dangerous, they don't feel safe, or they've been turned away due to lack of services availability. We do see some of that transient nature of people who are homeless, but we haven't encountered, for example, an agency who sends everybody over to Glendale from Skid Row or anything like that. HMIS, too, is going to be very helpful to us in tracking that type of movement, so.
I gather they're, they're walking into Glendale across the border.
You have, there's a certain part of the population that refuses service, refuses help, don't want to be in, in the system at all. What do we do for them?
Those are the folks that we're actually trying to address in this particular plan, and one of the strategies and one of the things that we think about is, they are resistant to the system that we have created because of the regulations, because of the guidelines, and many of them don't want to live in a congregate living situation, they would rather just be out on the street. That's why the creation of an array of housing options is key. We have to create, we can continue to say, no, no, you have to do it our way, and they will continue to be on the street. Or, we can refocus the way that we provide services and try to create services that are welcoming to them and meeting them at their level and where they're at, and that's where this strategy is going to come into play.
Yes.
It says high rate of recidivism. How high is that, I mean, in percentage?
I don't have a statistic on the rate of recidivism of folks who have been housed and become homeless again, but all of those people that are considered chronically homeless have had multiple episodes of homelessness. So, I mean, that gives you an idea of how many people are housed for a little while and then unhoused, and housed for a little while and then unhoused.
Okay. I have no cards or anything. I would hope that when we approve this, if we do, that, send a letter to the president telling him we're complying with his orders of 2003, at least we're trying. There are two motions.
I'll move 1A for the council.
Well, you know, before that, I'd like to have a little more research done on the question that I asked about the, about convicted felons and so forth. I'd like to find out what we're doing, because if we're putting people into individual units scattered throughout the community, and they're going to be monitored once a day or whatever, I mean, that, there's something wrong with that picture. We need to make sure that the client like that absolutely doesn't fall under Megan's Law or has that sort of issue with his.
I think, Mr. Quintero, that it's still under development. I mean, we're going to get reports on this.
What I can, what I can offer you is, we can do a written report, and I'll work with the city department to make sure that we're in compliance with all necessary guidelines, but then we'll also give you a written report of what exactly our procedure is.
Yeah, just get it back to us, to us know. Okay, it's been moved, is there a second on the city council?
Second.
Moved in second for city council, roll call.
Councilmembers Menuchyan, Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Hi.
For the Housing Authority?
I'll move 1B.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Authority members Najarian?
Yes.
Parazian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Yusefian? Chairman Menuchyan? Vice Chair, Nancy.
Yes.
And is there a motion to adjourn for the city council?
Move adjourn for the council.
Is there a motion for the housing authority to adjourn?
Moved. Second.
Or whatever needs to be seconded.
And thank you all for your support and being here today. We're on the right track.
All you people are hardworking, all your organizations, and we really appreciate it.
Greetings. I'm Glendale Police Chief Randy Adams, and I'd like to invite you to our next edition of Behind the Badge, Thursday, October 12th at 7:00 P.M. The topic is traffic enforcement. More lives are lost to traffic accidents every year than to crimes of violence. Traffic enforcement is extremely important. We need your help, and please watch our show on Thursday, October 12th at 7:00 P.M. on GTV6.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the September 26, 2006, meeting of the Glendale City Council being called. The order is 6:02 P.M. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmembers Menuchyan?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Quintero?
Here.
Yusefian?
Here.
Mayor Weaver?
Here.
Flight salute tonight will be led by Councilmember Menuchyan and the invocation by City Clerk Artie Casoc.
Please stand and join me in the salute to our nation's flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Glendale Character and Ethics Project Word of the Month in September is Responsibility, and the project urges everyone living and working in Glendale to be accountable for their actions. Let us pray tonight for guidance and strength so that we may act responsibly, both within the walls of these chambers and without, in our everyday lives. Let us pray, and in prayer, recommit ourselves to our sacred responsibility of working for the betterment of all people who live and work in this city. For as President Abraham Lincoln once said, "You cannot escape the responsibility of tomorrow by evading it today." Amen.
Thank you, ma'am. We have your report.
The agenda for the September 26, 2006, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, September 21, 2006, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Tonight, Mr. Menuchyan and I would both like to ask for adjournment of the council meeting in memory of two individuals. The one I'm putting on is for Dr. David Wallace. He passed away this past weekend at the age of 69. He was born and raised in Glendale, went to Hoover High School, and attended Cal Tech and USC, where he received his doctorate. He served as an Air Force captain and as an aerospace engineer and representative of JPL until retirement. During his retirement, he was involved in several activities, including the operation of a leased access channel on Charter Communications. He'll be best remembered, and why I remember him the most is that, starting in '93, when I ran for council, David Wallace ran, too. He did better than I did. He ran in '93, '95, '97, '99, 2001, and 2003. He was a proponent of preserving the hillsides for recreational purposes and was opposed to increase air traffic at Burbank Airport. Interactions are pending, and I'll miss you, David. You were a good man. Thank you. Mr. Menuchyan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to also request that we adjourn today's meeting in memory of Bartges Barsam. He was a longtime resident of Rancho Palos Verdes, died on September 17, 2006. After a long battle with cancer, I met him during my stay in New York. He was also a recipient of the Ellis Island Medal of Honor. I knew him a short time, but I was, I was enriched by that short friendship that we shared over in New York. He was 80 years old, and he was born in Tampico, Mexico, of Armenian parents who immigrated to the United States when he was five years old, and settled in Laramie, Wyoming. He served two years in the U.S. Navy during World War II and returned to Laramie to attend the University of Wyoming, earning degrees in electrical and mechanical engineering. He moved to Southern California in 1952 and worked for several, for several aerospace companies before going into private business. He was very active in the Armenian-American community and the Armenian Apostolic Church. He was, as I said, the recipient of the Ellis Island Medal of Honor in 2006, the Lifetime Humanitarian Award from the Armenian Icare Project in 2004. He was the Man of the Year in 1997 by the Knights of Arten Plus additional honors. He served as the original treasurer of the American University of Armenia and affiliate of the University of California, and he donated living quarters in the form of a hotel to the American University of Armenia. He was a well-known benefactor of the Western Diocese, as well as many organizations, a member of St. James Armenian Apostolic Church. He served a parish with utmost dedication. He also served on the diocesan level as council treasurer and later chairman. He has been an active member of the HGBU, Knights of Arton, Armenian Assembly, American University of Armenia, and other institutions. He also, through, and he told me some stories about how he assisted the struggle of Arzakh and the independence of Arzakh by providing a lot of aid, including humanitarian aid. In appreciation of his long years of service, the Western Diocese in 1993, Bartges Barsam was granted the Saint Narcissus the Graceful Medal of Honor issued by the late Catholic Osvaskin the First. So, I would like to request to adjourn in memory of Bartges Barsam as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. What is next, please?
The three is presentations and appointments, and? The three is presentations and appointments, and at 3A is agenda preview for the meeting of October 3, 2006.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For October 3, 2006, the Glendale Redevelopment Agency is scheduled to receive a report from the Director of Development Services regarding the Alex Theater Art Board quarterly report. There are a number of study sessions next Tuesday. The first one is at 10:00 AM, a study session of the city council to discuss the mobility study, in particular freeway access and capacity enhancements. Then there's a 2:30 study session of the city council to discuss open space with special benefit assessment districts. The regular city council meeting at 6:00 PM has the two consent items. One of them --
Nobody move! Everyone stay right where you are! My Polish winged Husars forces have surrounded the building, and my men are ready to strike. Should I give the word?
Go ahead.
You have an elected official here? Where is your starosta? You have a mayor present here? Where is your mayor?
Your turn.
I don't see anything funny.
Where is your mayor? Answer me!
Can you read English? Right there.
You are the mayor of this district?
No, I'm the mayor of the city.
As I said, this district.
No, this isn't a district, it's a city.
We Poles protect our brethren or anybody who needs our help. I have been informed that you are holding a prisoner here against their will, and we're here to free him.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Oh, him! Him! Take him. It'll be a short meeting if you take him.
Where is Bob Yusefian?
Him! Take him! It'll be a short meeting.
Here I am. Here I am.
Take him out, please. See ya, Bob.
I'm okay. I'm okay.
It is you, Bob, yes?
Yes, 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 it is me.
Okay. Well, Captain Silagowski from Silagowski's Regiment, Polish-winged Husars. We're here to rescue you and take you to the Unity Fest. Have you been hurt in any way?
Uh...
Have they harmed you?
They have, I swear. Not yet.
Take him, please.
But, no, 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 I have not been hurt, and the only problem is Unity Fest is on Sunday.
It's not, it's not today?
No, it's this Sunday.
That's all right, Bob.
You're a little bit early.
It would seem that I've been misinformed.
Uh-oh.
Military intelligence.
Wouldn't be the first time.
Well, this changes everything. What's the plan?
Plan is, you need to show up on Sunday at Verdugo Park at 12 o'clock and show up with all your military might, and we'll have a great time.
You heard what Bob said. For the first time, the Polish community and our winged Husars will be joining the Sixth Annual Unity Fest in Verdugo Park in Glendale, Sunday, October 1st, at 12 noon.
That's right.
I'll be there!
Thank you.
And you'll be there too?
Yes.
Right?
Yes, 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 yes. Well, that will be there. No questions there, that's it.
All right.
I'll be there.
It's a date. It's settled. We'll see you at the Unity Fest.
Thank you.
We'll do something or shoot him.
We need him alive.
He remains a prisoner.
Please. Thank you, with me.
Get free to go.
Just, it's going to be a short meeting now.
Just wait till my Polish Salvadorian son-in-law sees this. Got to hear the Polish side of it tonight. Well, I, I'm so sorry for the interruption.
Okay. I'll finish very quickly so that we can go on to announcements. There's adoption of, consideration of adoption of an ordinance regarding the South Brand Boulevard specific plan, and then two action items. Approval of an agreement for state legislative advocacy services with the Townsend Firm, and a report from the Director of Parks and Recreation regarding landscape maintenance, and one hearing from the Director of Planning and Appeal of Design Review Board case number PDR 2006-81A located at 1218 San Luis Rey Drive. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. What is next, please?
Next is city council or staff comments.
Mr. Menuchyan?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to congratulate all of you on your ethics training. My apologies for not being here. I had a similar seminar today for my, for the renewal of my CPA license, and that was internal controls and how to avoid fraud. That was a, that is a class that I was required to take for the renewal. That's why I was not able to be present today. I will be, there will be other seminars given by Mr. Howard?
There'll be, will be another program. We're targeting first week of December, and it will be an evening program for those who could not attend today's session.
I will make sure to attend that session. I will, I would also like to relay that I will hold my sidewalk office hours in Montrose on Sunday and on the Brand Market on, not this Thursday, about a week from this Thursday. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
How many turned out today for that? Did you make a count?
The count that I've heard, Mr. Mayor, members of council, was about 100, including staff.
The training, that was a good turnout. Mr. Najarian?
I'd just like to report on a busy and exciting weekend. I was fortunate enough to attend part of the Friendship Games held at Glendale High School, where athletes, young and not-so-young, from all over the city and even past our city boundaries, came to participate in sports such as soccer, volleyball, table tennis, swimming, and it certainly, although it was their first games, we certainly hope that they continue this project, this athletic competition, to foster, as most athletic competitions do, a spirit of goodwill amongst all the residents and competitors who attend. I also had the advantage, the good fortune, to be able to attend the 15th anniversary of Armenia's independence. There was a nice event at Verdugo Park. We certainly had quite a few residents out there enjoying the day with music and dancing and some great food as well. And I know Mr. Quintero was there with me, and we were, ate our share of Armenian delicacies. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Yusefian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not going to belabor the point about Unity Fest. I guess everybody heard the man. So, besides that, I just wanted to also let you know that the two council members who were on a basketball team for the, from our city, representing us, and also Bob Franz, which without him, we probably would have lost big time. We did not know he had other talents. The man made three-point baskets like there was no tomorrow from anywhere in the field. And, believe it or not, we won. We actually beat the Hometman team, and we won the game. We didn't think we could last that long, but we played for almost an hour, and to our surprise and to no help from me, believe me, I don't think I made a single basket, but Mr. Menuchyan made a few of them.
One.
Oh, okay. They didn't know that.
I was lucky.
But Mr. Franz was just making basket after basket after basket, and of course, another gentleman who happened to be from the school district, and also Greg Akorian, who was from, also from school district. So we had a very good team, and Mr. Chapchan, I never sent him sweat so much. But thank God for our team. We won, and he was very good, and I think we should do this again next year. But we need to start practicing. So I'm going to start reaching out and get Steve Zern. We need some people who are, like, tall, like the city manager, Steve Zern, and the police chief. I think that's what we need, some tall guys.
Defense.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we need to do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Starbird, in the back room, so I guess I'll turn to staff. Some months ago, all of a sudden, there was a lot of talk up in the Montrose area about developers tearing down half of a Montrose Village and redeveloping it with high-rise condos, whatever. I had that put on the agenda so that everybody could find out that that was not happening or couldn't happen. Now the same thing is happening again. I don't know how the rumors started about Mountain Oaks and groups forming and opposition and everything's going on and how the council's going to vote on the issue. And I need to ask staff, has there been a single shred of paper submitted to this city yet about a Mountain Oaks project?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we haven't received any applications to date. We have had a couple of preliminary meetings, very preliminary. There'll be questions like, what process would the applications have to go through? And I understand, based on some preliminary discussions, they are doing some homework, and they will be working on the project outside before they come in for some time. And we don't expect something immediately. But I could assure you that whatever is being discussed at this point is very preliminary.
And do you get other people over time that come in and do the same thing? Ask you questions about projects and potentials?
Actually, this is the second time people have come in on this property specifically.
On this property? And they come in on other properties too, don't they? All the time?
Almost all the time.
So there's nothing?
Every week.
Nothing unusual about this? So the public needs to understand what is being said out there and printed in the press at this stage are simply rumors and speculations circulated by some people for some reason. There is nothing, absolutely nothing, in this city to look at. All I know and my colleagues know is what we're reading in the paper about what is going to happen and how we're going to vote on it when it gets here in a couple of years, if it does. So caution people, I presume some people will speak in opposition to it today. We don't know anything. It's very premature to come in here and attack us if that's what you plan to do when we haven't even seen anything, not even a sketch. So try to put things in perspective. And one other thing on that. Understand, if anything is submitted in any, and directed at any member of council, how we feel on it, we are prohibited from stating any position on a project that might eventually end up in front of this body. If we do, we will have to excuse ourselves from voting because it will be determined that we have pre-decided a position. So we're not permitted to discuss it, even if we wish. People that want to challenge us, running for council or whatever, they can give their position freely. Our lips are virtually sealed, other than talking in generalities. That's what we're limited to. And I hope the public is listening at home. Mr. Menuchyan?
Yes, Mr. Weaver. I just would like to inform those who are here that a couple of items on the agenda will be requested to either be turned into a study session, I'm sorry, it's been a long day, and delaying another one for another week. I just want to, one request is from me. The ordinance we were discussing last week, I barely got a hold of it. I haven't read it. I don't feel comfortable voting on it today.
Which one?
The grilling thing?
The grilling, 7A?
No, it's not 7A. It's an introduction. It's 9...
Oh, 7A. 9A.
According to the land uses revisions to the zoning code, that's 9A.
7A is South Brand specific.
Seven...
That's the amendments to the South Brand specific plan and the zoning ordinances to allow outdoor grilling.
Okay. Yeah, I would like to request that, I haven't, I haven't had a chance since Friday or Thursday to look at it.
So you want, you're going to be asking for 9A to be postponed?
No, 7A.
7A to be...
To be postponed to next week.
Mr. Yusefian?
I want to read that. If there's going to be, Mr. Mayor, members of council, if there's going to be some discussion about...
I just want to inform the public that's what I'm saying.
If it's going to generate debate and discussion, you're going to need to read it in the record.
Okay.
Okay, wait till we get to 7A.
Okay.
Read in the record, then have this discussion, Mr. Howard.
Either then or now. Read it in the record now if you want to jump to it.
Okay. I don't want to jump ahead, I just want to inform.
Well, if we get into it now and decide to postpone, all those people that are here for that can go home. So, okay, jump ahead, read 7A into the record.
There is, I believe, one card submitted on 7A.
Oh, there's two cards.
Two cards. Adoption of ordinances, that's 7A ordinance, adding sections as listed to Title IX of GMC 1995, and amending sections as listed of Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995, and adding sections 30.34.155 to Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code, and amending sections as listed of the South, sections 404, 405, 504, 505, 704, 804, and 805, the South Brand Boulevard specific plan relating to outdoor grilling.
Okay, Mr. ...
I would like to postpone it till next week if that is agreeable to my colleagues.
Yes, we...
If there are speakers, I'll move to continue to next week.
Is that what we should do, a motion, Howard?
Yes, but you might want to ask if anybody who's turned in a card to speak on this issue would like to speak on the issue of whether it should be continued or not.
Only on the issue of continuance.
That seems to be the motion that's going to be proposed. I don't hear a motion on the floor yet, but it seems like that's where it may be going.
There's a motion made. There's not a second.
I'll make the motion to continue it to next week.
I'll second it. That would be October 3, 2006.
Is it inappropriate to ask some clarification questions?
Can, but my health staff, but right now it's going to be continued. If you're going to seek clarification, the speakers should have an opportunity to address those issues as well.
The only thing is, on the issue of grilling, I have a whole bunch of papers in here that basically from page, page 42 to page 65 have nothing to do with grilling. I'm assuming these have to do with changes to South Brand?
Page 45 through 55 are the definitions, and there was one definition, I believe, changed.
That was that.
That's why it's there. From 56 on, it's related to the South Brand Plan, which also has commercial zones that have the outdoor grilling provided for, but only the outdoor grilling part is the new part.
Okay. And if we're going to amend, I mean, if we're going to postpone this, could I get a strike-up version?
I was just going to suggest that perhaps we could give you a strike-up version. In addition, on Monday morning, we noticed that there was perhaps a little glitch in the way we handled the special events. So Tim and I have worked on a little bit of wording to clean that up. So what we'll do is, if it does get continued, we'll send you maybe tomorrow, a strike-up version, including the adjustment for that special events issue.
And I also talked to Mr. Starbird about some other clarification, so he may want to tell you.
I understand there was a question about the performance standards on the mixed-use zones that do apply for all commercial uses, not just outdoor grilling, and they only, they're in the code now, they're not being added as part of this. It's been there since we did the mixed-use zones.
That's not what I was talking about. I was talking about this chart.
Yes.
That we have, the table that we have.
Yes.
There is outdoor grilling, and it says, "Outdoor grilling occurring more than four times per year where the surface grilling and heating or smoking area is 10 square feet or less, measured cumulatively for all outdoor grilling heating."
Are we going a little too far?
That's the problem.
Yeah.
Howard, are we going a little too far?
No, the item's on the agenda. The further you go, the more the speakers have an opportunity to address these issues.
The motion on here is to continue to next week.
That's correct.
And Mr. Yusefian had a question. Now we seem to be going into greater depth. Is there something, is questions, it could be discussed after the meeting?
They certainly could be by an individual.
And I'm not proposing to go into the ordinance at all. I just want to talk about the schedule. Just to note that October 3, you have one item that will likely be fairly lengthy. As Lane noted earlier, that's the San Luis Rey Appeal. I don't know...
I don't know how many folks are going to appear for that, but as we usually experience in our appeal hearings, they can be quite lengthy. But on the other hand, there is a timing issue relative to this ordinance as well, isn't there, with respect to the DSP?
No, this one is not really tied to the DSP, the way the land uses is. This one could be put off a little longer.
Well, your schedule on the 3rd is heavy, your schedule on the 10th is heavy because you also have an appeal hearing there.
17.
Actually, one of the, a little lighter is on the 17th, or on the 24th is frankly quite light, October 24th.
Mr. Manukian?
I don't have an issue with next week, I think we can handle it, but if the majority of my colleagues wanna postpone it to the 17th or the 24th...
Can we do a special meeting? Do we have room for a special meeting, like 2:30?
You can certainly do it as a...
You can't adopt the ordinance in the afternoon.
We thought you might have a study session to go through it, but then it has to be introduced or adopted at a regular meeting.
We've done that already.
Right, okay.
I just wanna read the ordinance before I vote on it. I don't know how my colleagues fear 17th or 24th or next week, that's fine with me, I don't mind doing it next week if you feel...
I'd like to get it over with, I'd like to do it sooner than that. We haven't had a midnight meeting in two or three weeks.
I think next week, you're gonna have a lot of people coming, and it won't be fair to them.
Maybe we'll do it the following week.
Following week, so it'll be two, so 17...
Well, my suggestion would be then, kick it over to the 17th, at least you've got a decent meeting where if you have items you need to discuss here, you won't be doing it at midnight.
Okay, 17, I'll amend the motion to continue it to the October 17th without further notice.
I'll second that change.
No further discussion, roll call. Oh, wait, that's what I gotta ask. Okay, question is, does anybody wanna comment only on the continuance or the questions that Mr. Yusefian raised? That's all, starting with Barry Allen.
No, I'm asking.
Margaret Stepp.
If I can't be here in the future, can I kick this to an oral communication comment since it's no longer on the agenda?
Yes. I just looked at the city attorney.
She's not gonna be discussing it tonight, and she's not going to be here, you might have the appropriate to have her take oral communications.
I'll switch your card over. Brej Sarkisian? Margaret Hammond? Ray Galloway?
I'm in that same boat, I won't be here next week, and I would very much like to...
The date you're looking at is October 17th.
Two weeks.
I wouldn't be there either on October, and I would like to have it in oral.
Oral? Okay. Okay, roll call.
Council members, Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Wintaro?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. Okay, Mr. Manukian, just a second. Mr. Manukian, you wanted another one pulled?
No, that was it.
That was it. Okay, Mr. Yusefian?
On another matter, Mr. Mayor, I just want to let you know that I'd like to request a study session for 9A. As you could see, it is a fairly lengthy document, all kinds of zone changes and so on and so forth. I would appreciate a little study session before we vote on this thing.
So you want that pulled too?
Yeah.
Do we have speakers on that one? You wanna make, first you gotta read it into the record.
Well, I'm waiting. No, I have no cards on 9A. Mr. Starbird?
Again, homing in on schedules, I had anticipated Mr. Yusefian's request, only because he told me earlier. As a result, Elaine and I did look at the schedules, and was it October 10, Elaine?
Yes, sir. Were you trying to get this before the downtown specific plan?
Right, this is the one that does have a timing issue. So our thought was, in the morning on October 10. Now, that leaves you with a fairly long day. You've got a downtown specific plan EIR, joint meeting, no GRA or GHA business, and that is the evening of the Ramsey appeal. But if we're going to have a study session, that's probably the earliest we can do it and still stay on track from a scheduling standpoint with the downtown specific plan.
So 10 o'clock on the 10?
Well, wait up, wait up. Is there a motion?
Matter hasn't even been read into the record yet, so...
I'm sorry. Please read 9A into the record.
9 is a hearing, and 9A is Director of Planning regarding proposed ordinance amending Title XXX of the Glendale Municipal Code and the South Brand Boulevard specific plan relating to comprehensive revision of land uses, and 9A1 resolution adopting the negative declaration at 9A2 ordinance for introduction.
Okay, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we have a study session on October 10.
Mr. Mayor.
October 10th, what time?
At 10:00 AM.
10:00 AM.
Mayor, if I may suggest something to speed it up, if you don't call that a study session, you call it a special meeting, then you can introduce the ordinance at that time, and it will move through faster. We don't have to give notice again and so on.
What's wrong with 9 o'clock?
Is that okay, Mr. City Attorney?
It is, you do not, you can introduce an ordinance, you can't adopt it until the evening, but you can introduce it at an earlier time. This will have to be done without further public notice, this is a notice public hearing.
So what's wrong with 9 o'clock?
I have a problem with 9 o'clock, could do 9 o'clock.
Fine with staff.
That's fine. Okay, then I modify my motion to have a special meeting at 9 AM on October 10.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion?
That'll be without further public notice.
Yes.
And a second?
Yes.
Discussion, roll call.
Council members, Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Wintaro?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. Or we leave off, right?
And consent items.
Okay. All right, read it in.
Consent items, item five, including minutes to following our routine that may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed.
Okay, we have two cards, 5H and 5J will be pulled. I'll move the rest. Okay, discussion, the second?
Second.
Let's see, I was here for those. Okay, roll call, please.
Council members, Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Wintaro?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. Please read 5H into the record.
5H is Fire Chief regarding renewal of ambulance billing services with Whitman Enterprises. H1 is resolution authorizing renewal of an agreement.
Dr. Richard Espiritu, two minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council staff, I am Dr. Richard Espiritu. I have a few problems with this contract. It states on the financial impact, they have a projected of $3,377,000 with a 5.5% of collected fees going to this company. And in it, it says it's $192,500. If you take 5.5%, that does not come to $192,000. It also states about the complexity of the Medi-Cal, Medicare, insurance, and HMO billing. Like to bring to your attention that all insurance companies use what is called a uniform billing form that has been in existence for a number of years. They have standardized the CPT codes and the ICD-9 codes. They also talked about 80% of revenue collected. One of the issues that I have a great problem with is their charge for PulseOx. I don't know if you know what a PulseOx is. It's a machine that's put on the finger to determine the oxygen content of the blood. A portable one that you can buy from Oximeter runs $187. PulseOx sells it for $199. Non-X sells it for $237. In most hospitals, you can get a machine that runs $1,200. In the emergency rooms and OR, there are no charges for the use of a PulseOx machine. And there is, they use, this billing company uses a CPT code 94664, they charge $120 for that service. That's a 24-hour billing program, they should be doing a different one. And I feel that $70 charge that the city is, the fire department is charging, which is about 55%, is excessive. They also have to bill the insurance companies according to state and federal law. And I have possession of documents for my mother's services that are in contrary to that. I thank you for your time and consideration, and I'd like somebody to answer some of these questions.
Mr. Stedman?
Let me ask Mike Matlock with the Fire Department to come forward. While he's doing that, I'll note that this morning I did what Dr. Espiritu did, is I did the math on the fiscal impact, indeed, the number should be 185,755, and Mike Matlock confirmed that somebody had done a math there. Indeed, the number is 185,755 average for the term of the contract. On the other items, Mike, can you respond to those?
I'm not entirely sure, Mayor and council. So I understood the other issues, one had to do with the coding for various services, and quite frankly, I'd have to get back to the council on that issue. That's something that's beyond my expertise and is one of the reasons we pay the consultant firm recommended here to manage that for us. As far as the PulseOx charges and all of the charges for that matter, our fees are, adopt the Los Angeles County's fees by reference, so they are, in fact, the same fees that are charged by substantial majority of ambulance operators in the county. I would point out that because it has a list price of one particular amount, that's not necessarily what we get reimbursed by from anybody, including Medicare, Medi-Cal, or any of the insurance companies. Customarily, they tell us what they're going to reimburse us at, irrespective of the list rate. And the list rate goes into their calculations of how much they'll reimburse us, but never are we able to collect anywhere near the full list price on any of these services, particularly for insurance, Medicare, and Medi-Cal. Beyond that, it'd probably be best to sit down with Dr. Espiritu and go through those particular items and see what those issues are in more detail and respond to them in more detail.
Wanna make a motion, or what?
Motion for what?
Yeah, I move...
Moving it?
Yeah.
Oh, 5H, oh, okay.
Second?
5H.
With a modified number?
Yes.
It's just an informational item, it's not part of the contract. It was just an explanatory item.
It moved and seconded? Okay, roll call.
Council members, Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Wintaro?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. Perhaps you can sit down with Dr. Espiritu and answer his other questions.
Oral communications, Bessie.
What else is left?
I think it's the J, I think.
J, please.
City Attorney regarding biannual report on the need to revise the city of Glendale's Conflict of Interest Code at J1, motion to note and file.
Barry Allen, two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, staff, and of course, the public, I'm Barry Allen of Vanguard. The city attorney has given his biannual report regarding the Conflict of Interest Code. It needs to be revised only if there will be penalties placed in it. At this time, the only people that can feel the penalty are citizen volunteers, commissioners, and board members. Staff are covered by civil service, and council will neither censure nor bring charges against any of its members, a toothless ordinance at best. Let's put some substantial financial penalties when city officials violate the Conflict of Interest Code and have the code administered by an outside body, not influenced by council or staff. I'm Barry Allen for Vanguard.
Is the motion to note and file? Mr. Manukian?
I'll move the motion at 5J and...
5J1.
5J1, and you will be coming back with a revised code in December? Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is the required report the council's supposed to receive every two years that just reflects that there will be modifications to the code by December of this year, and we're gonna be coming back to you with modifications of the code.
Second? Roll call, please.
Council members, Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Wintaro?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. What's next, please?
Next is oral communication, discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Okay, first speaker, Lola Nun, followed by Dr. Richard Espiritu.
I'm Lola Nun, I've been elected to speak for the chess-playing community of Glendale. We've come down here to express our gratitude for the chess park and all the support that the city council and the Glendale Parks Recreation and Community Services Department and the Glendale Police Department has rendered in assistance with organizing the Glendale Goodwill Chess Team Championship, which was held June 10th, and all the support that they've given to us throughout the last two years. In particular, we'd like to thank the Parks and Recreation Director George Chapchanian and Alan Alenkin, also of the Parks and Recreation Department, and Police Department Chief Randy Adams, and especially Sergeant Steve Carey, who were unable to be here tonight. We have letters to present to Alan Alenkin, as well as the Police Department, but we especially wanted to show this presentation to demonstrate how much the kids of Glendale and other, you know, citizens have enjoyed these games. The park has, by the way, won another National Architecture Award for the lights, and it is, in spite of criticism, is a multi-use, you know, multi-function park. It's being used currently by the kids on Friday nights for crump dancing, as well as chess players in the evenings and when we have organized tournaments. So once again, thank you very much, and if Mr. Alenkin will come up, we can present the trophy. And I'd like to read briefly from the letter that we are presenting. Mr. Alenkin, with all our heart, we at the AAA Glendale Chess Club would like to thank you for all your efforts in supporting the organization and believing in our chess goals. Without your support, it would be much more difficult to achieve our objectives. We therefore are extremely grateful for all of your efforts to assist our club in our annual city goodwill youth chess tournament held at the Glendale Chess Park. We will also continue to look forward to your mutual relationship for countless future years for the benefit of aspiring youth interested in chess. It is with great joy and pride to honor you with this plaque. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor and council, good evening. I just want to, on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Department, thank my director George Chapchan and my administrator Brittany Bellotti for allotting funds raised for the second annual tournament. We purchased beverages and food, we purchased trophies and medals, as well as developed some banners to place in the chess park, promoting the chess park, not only for the chess park, but also for our lunchtime concert series that I also took place in the summer. So I just want to let you guys know personally that the chess park itself is getting good use, and I want to thank you guys for your continued support.
And one brief mention, forgive me, I'm not a great public speaker, I forgot to mention, among the people here to give the support is Todav Abrahamian and Armin Ambarzumian. Todav is the first youth ever to go 9-0 with a perfect score at the Pan American Youth Games in July, and she and Armin are on their way to Georgia, I believe in Russia, for the World Youth Chess Championship. Armin is the United States coach for the United States Chess Federation. This Glendale is very important to the world chess community. So thank you once again for the park and for all your support.
When are they going to Georgia? When is it?
Whenever anybody gets information from the city, materials, copying materials are paid for. And I believe the going rate is a dime per page. That more than covers the paper and the ink. So the only other outstanding charge beyond that is the labor of the people actually looking up the information and preparing it. A quarter of a million dollars at, assuming an average wage of $50,000 a year per employee, that's six man years of work. 12,000 hours. And it were roughly $1,500 in costs, 60 hours of work for each request. And that just doesn't seem reasonable to me. It seems like an awful lot of work to answer those simple questions. So I'm just really curious about where this number of a quarter million dollars came from? Who gave it to you? It seems like a ridiculously high number for something like that. If it actually does cost that much for our employees to look up information for our citizens, we should simply open up the public records for the citizens' inspections and make the citizens themselves do the work. That's the only cost-effective method that I can think of. Thank you.
Speaker Bonnie Adams, followed by Judy Erpenbeck. Go ahead, Ed, Bonnie.
Okay, I'm Bonnie Adams. There's a few things I want to say. First of all, as far as sensitivity training, I have stood up here any number of times and offered to do it. Now, I'm in Glendale. I'm not chopped liver here. I have offered to do workshops for staff and for the people. The staff needs it. You staff people need it. In the second place, I'm not grandstanding. I have a very arthritic knee, and I'm in a transport chair right now because I can't walk long distances, and I'm probably going to be in the hospital in a couple of months. Thirdly, Mr. Mayor Weaver, I, you kept arguing a couple of weeks ago about the fact that, you know, you seem to imply that elected officials should not have to be accountable to the voters. Well, they are. And I can't understand, and I don't know where you get your figures from either. And the other thing I want to say finally is that the project numbers that were given for the staff report on the utility tax, I don't know where you got those from. I think you have to recheck your numbers because the...
Wait, Bonnie, this is on the agenda.
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. All right. I'll speak about that afterwards. Okay. I'm sorry. Thanks. Okay. I'll wait. I'm sorry. I forgot. Oh, I do want to say one more thing. And that is, as far as sensitivity, sensitivity training is concerned, I don't know whether or not to be flattered and considered, well, I'm one of the group right now, or whether to be angry at every one of you here. When that man came rushing through the door with a gun and all sorts of things and yelling about where's the mayor, where's the mayor, and everything, I almost lost my dinner. Now, to me, now, maybe that was a planned skit, and it was funny, and you all thought it was funny. But I didn't know who that was, and I couldn't see what he was doing. It scared the hell out of me. And I'm still shaking from it. And when I tell you I almost lost my dinner, I really almost lost my dinner. And it's not funny. And I think before you people start to, start to, you need sensitivity training very much. All of you do. And that really frightened me. I don't think it was funny at all, the way things are. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Do yourself, Jim.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to apologize to the speaker.
I'm happy, Bonnie.
I'm terribly sorry, Bonnie. I completely forgot about your disability at the time. It was a skit. It was put together. The guy did not have a gun. He was a winged soldier, a Polish soldier from the several hundred years ago. So he's going to be one of the people who's going to be in the Unity Fest. I completely forgot, because most people saw, if you saw all the clothing and attire, it was pretty obvious this was not going to be something that's going to be threatening to the public.
But I didn't.
But you did not. And I'm terribly sorry. I forgot all about that. It's my fault. I apologize. There are times that I'm not right all the time. And when I screw up, I'm a big enough man to admit that I screwed up, and I am willing to apologize. So I do apologize my apologies.
Mr. Menucha.
Just for the record, I didn't know, and I was scared as well until, I mean...
Yeah, that's why you wanted to go with him.
Yes. I almost jumped out of my chair.
As far as I'm concerned, Bonnie, I did not approve of it, and I did not think it was funny. And I have a Polish son-in-law. Judy Erpenbeck. I get it right this time?
Yes, you did.
Followed by Margaret Hammond.
Actually, my name is Jonae Shady, and she's asked me to speak on behalf of National Alliance on Mental Illness. We needed to let you know that we do have a group here in Glendale. It is a support group for family members who have relatives that suffer from a severe mental illness such as schizophrenia, bipolar, severe depression. Both of us have family members. My brother has schizophrenia, resides in Atascadero State Hospital, and she has a son with bipolar. We wanted to let you know that this support group has been going on for over 20 years here in the city of Glendale at Verdugo Mental Health Center. And this year, this year, every year for the last three years, we've been holding a walk. And we wanted to announce the walk, which will be October 7th. We have flyers. We have information about NAMI. All of the service providers in the areas are sending teams of the walk. The walk is over in Santa Monica on the promenade this year. The last two years it was in Irwindale, but we're changing venues because over 50,000 people walk that promenade every single day. And as part of our mission in NAMI is to dispel stigma that's related to mental illness, severe mental illness. And we wanted to let you know that this walk raises funds and raises awareness. Some of the things that we've done with the monies here in Glendale, as I am the president of the NAMI-Glendale chapter, and also I am the president of the Los Angeles Coordinating Council of NAMIs. There's 19 affiliates here in the county of Los Angeles. We did, we did fund training for family-to-family teachers. And we've taught classes here in Glendale, five classes, over the last three years. We are looking for some space to hold the classes because Verdugo Mental Health is going through a change, and they no longer have a space for us to offer these classes. They are free to family members. All of our services are free. We do not charge for any of our materials. We have materials, and we have a library in our own local chapter. We also went in and we trained some people to teach almost sensitivity training, actually on mental illness, for provider training. I believe that Verdugo Mental Health Center will be utilizing this program. The family-to-family classes is a 12-week program. The provider training is a 12-week program where we actually go and we, we teach the providers all of the different communication skills and problem-solving skills that family members need for their relatives. So we are just here to announce our walk, and that we hope that maybe some of you here can either participate in the walk or make some donations to the walk and help us promote this walk because we want to see 6,000 people walking the promenade along with the 50,000 consumers that walk there every single day. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Hammond, followed by John Drayman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and city staff. My name is Margaret Hammond. I attended a very interesting, I guess seminar, you might call it, that was run today by the city, by Mr. Scott Howard, the city attorney. There were some very interesting thoughts and information that came out of it. One of them was the cynicism about government. In 1966, most Americans, meaning 76%, trusted the government to do what was right most or all of the time. By 1992, the level of trust had dropped to 28%. Today, 8% of Americans say they have confidence in the federal government, only 8%. And only 9% have such confidence in local government. Now, I wonder why. Here's some examples, perhaps, of why they do not have confidence. The hillside ordinance, the city council approved building on a lot, 6,200 square feet, when the ordinance called for 7,500. On a lot with 71% slope, that was presented as only 54% to city council and planning. Yet it was approved. On 702 East Glen Oaks, when a house purchased in an R1R area was being used as a business, the person applies for a zone change, not just for their home, but for the whole lot, the whole block, even though the neighbors opposed vehemently to this. Then there was the hanky-panky of making a new ordinance so they could get the application fee of $15,000 returned, even though they were wrong in the first place and should not have been operating a business out of the R1R. And then there's the ongoing problems with restaurants morphing into banquet halls without adequate parking, on and on. And lastly, the ongoing farce of passing an ordinance to allow the illegal outdoor commercial barbecuing to continue after years of illegal use, and in direct opposition to the state's AQMD rulings. So how can the citizens not be cynical about our city government? This is just a few examples off the top of my head. And all the rumors about the Oaks problem up there in Crescenta may be just rumors. But I remember when there were just rumors about knocking down the Mission Houses down on Mission Road, and when you drive along there today, there's nothing but vacant lots. So, you know, rumors aren't always just rumors. Our nightmares do come true. And sometimes with the help of our city council. Thank you.
John Drayman, followed by Herbert Milano.
Good evening. My name is John Drayman. I'm president of the Montrose Shopping Park Association. And I'm here tonight to follow up on a presentation that I made a little over a month ago. Mr. Mayor Weaver, you were not with us that evening, and council member Yusefian was running the meeting. In response to a letter that was submitted to the Glendale news press by Robert Thompson, who is a former postmaster of Montrose, suggesting that perhaps someone in the city would sponsor a contest to find out what the oldest sidewalk contractor imprint was and where it was located. And the Shopping Park Association thought this would be a fun thing to do, because, as many of you know, one of the things that we use to promote our district is the memorializing of our local history. And so before I came down here to do this, I put in a call to council member Yusefian, who encouraged me to come forward and, and make my presentation. And I appreciate the fact that he was supportive of that. I presented the idea, and then also asked if the council would be sort of the verifier of fact, as it were, once we received our entries during the allotted time. And I had said I would bring the five oldest entries and present them here. Well, the time period for the contest was August 15th through September 15th. And we had approximately 75 entries that came in by mail, by email, and by telephone. And these were entries from citizens all over the city, which was very gratifying. We didn't want it to be just a Montrose contest. We want it to be a part of the celebration of the city's centennial by doing this. So we wanted people to get out and walk in their neighborhoods, meet their neighbors in the process, and also discover a little bit about their, the history in their own backyards. So after a month of people searching in their neighborhoods and walking around, we have here five entries, which are the five oldest that were submitted. In the process, we also learned a great deal about the history of the city, because many people wrote in and said, hey, you know, I found one that's marked, let's say, 1960. I know it's not the oldest. But in the process, I saw handprints in front of various households in concrete that were dated in 1920s or the 1930s with children's names under them. Maybe not something we encourage, but interesting nonetheless. We had letters from people who were the grandchildren of the original contractors that had done many, much of the work in the 1920s, with interesting stories about how the family business was on Acacia Street, and that the writers, the author of the letter's grandmother had said, you know, all of this equipment's being hauled around the city by mule. Can't stand the smell of the mule on the property, so relocate your business elsewhere. And so the business moved to San Fernando Road. A lot of interesting history came up. Anyway, here we are with five entries. It would appear, if they're all correct, that we have two ties for three, three winning positions. And...
You have two for the same exact date?
That's correct.
There a time?
No. What we decided we would do is that we would, we would provide a duplicative awards to both, should these all be correct. And some of them are funny, because the city's changed a lot since the 20s and so on. So some of them are, for example, on a particular street directly behind Central Avenue where there isn't actually an address. It's just a spot, or next to the bunch, the bus bench on such-and-such a corner. So it's kind of interesting. Very anxious to turn this over to you. The first prize, as you may recall, will be a dinner for two at the Black Cow Restaurant in Montrose. If this all verifies, as, as was turned in, there is a tie for second place. So we will be awarding two script certificates for $50 each in Montrose Shopping Park for any of our stores or restaurants. And then it looks like there may be a tie for third place as well. And those are two $25 shopping sprees in the Montrose Harvest Market. By the way, these ties are not the same locations. They're different locations throughout the city. So it's kind of interesting. We had many, many people in the county, the unincorporated part of the county, that sent theirs in and saying, gee, can we be part of this? And we also had a number of people that said, well, you know, I found these contractor imprints. They're not dated, but I provided the pages and pages of research about this contractor, so it must, it must have been during a particular time period. Anyway, I won't take any more of your time. I'd like to turn this over to the council to check these dates out and make sure that these five entries are bona fide.
How do we verify that they're bona fide? I guess our job is to go there and go and verify.
The dates, the dates of the imprints are listed, and the locations, and many of the people sent in photographs as well, but...
No, actually, I'd like to get a copy of it, and I'd like to go out there and do my job.
We'd also like to have you, to ask the council if you would be willing to participate in the, in the awarding of these...
When will the awards?
As soon as we hear back from, from you.
Okay.
We'll do that. And we thank you very much for being a part of this. It's, it's a lot of fun to be able to do this. It's one of the good things that we all get to take part in. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Herbert Milano, followed by Barry Allen.
Good evening, Mayor Weaver, members of the city council, city staff. My name is Herbert Milano. Thank you for allowing me to follow Mr. John Drayman. I wish I had his very tone of voice and, and excellent presentation. It's a gentleman that I've always admired for his contributions to the city. Many of you know that a couple of years ago, I strongly supported his candidacy for, for council, and I sure hope that he, he thinks again this, this coming year, because he is an excellent contributor to our community, has a tremendous amount of decency, and has always shown a significant amount of, of energy and effort, and shows the outcome of his efforts is seen every Sunday morning, when you go out there to the most special place in Glendale, I think out there in Montrose. So thank you for allowing me to follow him. I've, I came here to speak about a couple of issues that have been present here in the city, and in a neighboring city in Los Angeles, and the state of California. And that has to do with the issue of how we govern. And today, I believe, we had a study session on ethics, and I believe our city attorney, Scott Howard, was doing a presentation on it. I've downloaded from the website of the California State Attorney General and the Fair Political Practices Commission one section that I wanted to bring up to council. And it's section number eight on incompatible activities. I bring up this section because I found it so incredibly relevant to many of the issues that we have faced here in the city council in the last few months. And let me, let me briefly mention a couple. There's a type of activity that is prohibited using prestige or influence of the state for private gain. Obviously, this is for the state of California. Using state facilities, time and equipment, or supplies for private gain. Performing private activities which later may be subject to the control, review, inspection, or audit, or enforcement by an officer or employee. Receiving anything of value from a person seeking to do business with city officials, the agency where the item of value could be reasonably interpreted as having been intended to influence the official. That's from the, this particular section eight. Also, at this year's November election, we have Proposition 89. It's not a perfect proposition, but it's a proposition that I strongly endorse, which has to do with political campaigns and public financing. I think it's a step in the right direction. Because both of these issues concerning undue influence and political contributions, I think, are at the heart of the problems that we find in Glendale. I have spoken in the past concerning the issue of a campaign contributor donating or contributing, let's say, an amount of $10,000 to a specific candidate, and then finding within the year that they are the beneficiaries of a grant. In this case, I remember the Royal Palace receiving a grant for $40,000 for a facelift to their building, and they having given $10,000 to Mr. Weaver's campaign. But in my, in my travels running the streets of Glendale, I stopped by the Masonic Temple and looked at the front of the Masonic Temple, and looked at the doors, and looked at the stained glass windows. And this is a building that is a heritage building for our city. And I figured, my God, what would $40,000 have done for that building? But yet we find ourselves contributing $40,000 to the Royal Palace. And I could spend more time dealing with a lot of these issues, but I find it troublesome. And I think that it took me a long time to come to the conclusions that I have arrived now, because I think during the first two years that I came to city council, I granted always the benefit of the doubt to all of you. And that continues to be the case. But I find it even more and more difficult as time goes along to keep the same level of, of confidence, that you're truly looking out for the residents of the city of Glendale first. I think we come out fourth or fifth out there, depending on the decisions having to do with those individuals who contributed to the campaign. I hope that people look to Proposition 89 as a way of looking at the way that the state of California is perhaps beginning to lead the nation, as a way of controlling the type of influence that does not benefit. The, to try to control the type of campaign influence and lobbying efforts that basically put us behind. I hope that the city of Glendale someday will have something like it. But my objective here today is to encourage people to take a look at Proposition 89, and to take a look at the, what the Attorney General has to say concerning these practices. Thank you very much.
Someday, Mr. Milano, you've got to learn to tell the truth.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council staff, of course, the public. I'm Barry Allen with Vanguard. And I want to thank Margaret Hammond for those statistics on distrust in government. Because last week, I spoke to the reasons why there's distrust in government. I received numerous calls, emails, and letters, none of which were from Victoria Samos, asking for clarification and specific examples. Here they are. One of the statements, "By reducing time for public comment, the mayor grants only one to two minutes for the public statements during public hearings and consent calendar items." "By attempts at intimidation for obtaining public records, by making people feel guilty for exercising their rights, by distortions of the real numbers by making up numbers and costs, issues that have no bearing on the Public Record Act." "The California Public Records Act allows anyone to obtain and review or copy official public records within a specified time limit. There is no limit as to the number of requests. Mayor Weaver came up with bogus numbers of requests and made-up numbers to confuse and deceive the public." Politicians like Mayor Weaver generally do not like people probing those records, as they may find official documents having to do with improprieties, as in the case of Mayor Weaver. Public records being available to us, you and me, are so important that we voted for Prop 59, and now public records is a part of the state constitution. We can't allow our elected officials to denigrate the state constitution. "By ordering the police to remove a member of the public that chose to verbally challenge the chair." I was in the audience when, following a public comment on an issue before the council, Herbert Milano was walking back to his seat, and Mayor Weaver verbally lashed out at him on another unrelated issue. We almost saw that tonight. Milano started to return to the lectern when Mayor Weaver said Milano was out of order and directed the police officers to escort Milano from chambers. Fortunately, city attorney Howard brought the mayor back to Glendale 2006. Milano sat down, and two police officers towered over him, blocking his face. A lesser individual would have surely been intimidated and never returned to speak out and represent the public. "By pretending there are new policies that bear on First Amendment rights, when in fact there are new policies." The Vanguard Weekly frequently carries news of activities that are not always flattering to the councilor staff. Mr. Weaver has taken it upon himself to violate that First Amendment right of freedom of speech and freedom of the press by removing Vanguard from the city hall. Additionally, he sat on this dais and told a lie regarding the policy on periodicals. According to the city attorney, there is no policy on periodicals. "By firing commissioners that spoke out on public issues, the charter allows the removal of commissioners at the will of the council." Patrick Masaihe and Lenore Solis, both former commissioners, were removed, quickly, I might add, after they spoke out publicly on the rail crossing, a display of might, power, and arrogance that is more often seen in dictatorships. A city attorney that gives his opinion there's no violation of FPPC rules, but does now touch upon the gift of public funds. A council member accepting gifts of public funds from the police department, the library, and the GWP. Public records disclose that seven police officers and six police cars were assigned to the Miss Asia Pageant, a production of Vergilia Productions, a for-profit business on whose executive committee Mayor Weaver sits. We all heard Chief of Police Adams on this topic, and Mr. Weaver demand of his employees, Mr. Howard and Mr. Adams, if he had gotten something that others would not get. Howard said Weaver hadn't violated FPPC rules, but did not go into accepting a gift of public funds. And Chief Adams said that the police department is quick to respond to requests from the council. Public records indicated that the library charges for room rentals, yet Miss Asia was not charged $2,500 for the use of the auditorium for a for-profit company. The GWP sponsored the event, and our utility bills went up. It's understandable why Mayor Weaver is upset about the California Public Records Act. Access to public records is an important tool, one of the few that we have, that allows us to look over the shoulder of government and to make sure our rights are not trampled upon, and our pockets are not picked by elected officials whose interests are personal and not for the interest of the public. Thank you. I'm Barry Allen for Vanguard. And don't forget, you can get your copy by calling this number.
Marilyn Gunnel, followed by Dave Ahn.
Good evening. I'm here this evening to talk about a wonderful event that has been talked about before, but not by me. Two weeks from Friday at 11:30 in the morning, there will be a celebration of the work of the City of Glendale Fire Department. Awards luncheon will be the venue, located not at the originally planned venue, but at the Oakmont Country Club. So for those of you who are attending, which I'm sure some of you ahead of me here are attending, as am I, the location will be at the Oakmont Country Club, and not at the originally planned location of the Hilton. And I hope that... And I hope that we will have a wonderful showing. We already have many, many reservations. And we know that the Fire Department does a tremendous amount for us. Not only do they come to fight fires, but they come to take the sick to the hospitals, they come to give emergency care, and they come to teach young people in our elementary schools about how to be safe and fire safe. And also, they teach students at Hoover High School in a special fire academy there. So, and as a representative of the committee, which consists of the Glendale Sunrise Rotary Club, of which I'm a 17-year member, and the Glendale Fire Department, it's my privilege to re-announce this great event. Hope to see you there. Bye-bye.
Mrs. Gonnell?
Yes.
Curiosity, why is it being moved from the Hilton to the Oakmont?
I really don't know the answer to that, but perhaps you could check with the Fire Department.
Yeah, would staff provide me an answer why it was moved? Not now, now, tomorrow? I'd like to know why it was moved.
I would assume because there's a labor, because there's a labor problem and a labor issue at the Hilton. I would assume that's why they didn't go there.
If it turns out to be a labor union, please tell the Fire Department the mayor will not be there. You don't get involved in private labor negotiations. Please don't.
When the land is subsidized, that the hotel sits on.
Next speaker is David Ahern, followed by Ray Galloway.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Dave Ahern with the Relay for Life Committee, with my colleagues Coco Panosian and Elena Bobolian. Tonight, I'm going to rely on my public speaking coach, Mr. Franz, and keep my six friends what when, who, where, why, and how. So it's Relay for Life, October 7th and 8th, 10:00 a.m. till 10:00 a.m. The American Cancer Society is the who.
The old star, Mr. Franz?
That would be the same, Mr. Franz, yes. The American Cancer Society and the Glendale community are the who of the event. The where is the sports complex park off Fern Lane. The why is to raise funds for cancer research, and also to promote cancer education in Glendale. And the how is through a 24-hour walkathon, where the community, teams of community members take turns walking for 24 hours, which simulates the one day in the life of someone who has cancer. It stays within 24 hours. With that, let me ask Coco to speak to you a bit about our teams for the event.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Weaver, members of council, Coco Panosian, Chair of Registration Accounting. On behalf of the committee, I'd like to extend our appreciation for continued support from council for the event. I'd like to report also that as of 2 o'clock this afternoon, we had 34 teams that had signed up, and would like to encourage viewing residents to call Linda Patrick at 548-3351 so that they may sign up for a team. It is a fun-filled event, and they will touch on a lot of the entertainment that we have planned for today. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, our friend and colleague Linda Patrick couldn't be here tonight, but she often encourages the team members, when we come to speak with you about this event, to share their own experience and why they might be involved in this activity. For many of us, it's really one of the best team-building activities that we participate in as members of the community and as city employees. But on a personal level, for me, almost 10 years ago, someone that I cared about became very ill with a cancer. And that's a pretty devastating thing when it enters your life. And it goes from a phone call and a trip to try and find the hospital, to suddenly going every day. And the days turn into weeks, and the weeks turn into months. And on nights like tonight, when you work late, you still go, because that's where she is, and she can't leave. She can't leave, and you won't leave. It's a powerful, powerful thing to go through in your life and with someone in your family. And we don't have very good ways to fight back in those situations. We oftentimes feel quite lost.
And often, the treatment is just as bad as the disease itself. And some individuals also pass away just from the treatment, because they can't, their immune system gets damaged, and they can't recover in time, and they get pneumonia, and they pass. That's how my father-in-law passed as well. God bless his soul. Actually, I haven't joined any team yet, Mr. Ahern, and I would like to join your team.
Thank you so much. We have a spot for you.
Do you really?
As it turns out. We will fit you in.
Okay, thank you very much.
And thank you for helping.
I have a large family that you're going to have to fit in as well, so.
We'll make space, for sure, for sure. In any event, it's a powerful experience, but Relay has been, for us and for our organization, a powerful experience, all for the better, for, I think, all of us. And so, so thank you for letting me share that with you. With that, our food for the event will be outstanding. We have a great committee, the Food Divas, Elena Bobolian, Annette Vartanian, Alina Azizian, our remote committee member, Norma Valles, Manya Hunanian, and myself. And so, we look forward to providing you outstanding food and...
So you're handling the food?
Yes, sir, in a manner of speaking.
I'm going to have to bring brown bags, then.
Mm-hmm. For folks that would like to participate in the event who aren't signed up yet, they can contact Linda Patrick at 548-3351. And we'd encourage everyone in the community to come out and join us. We...
There's still time for sponsorships and additional teams or whatever.
That's correct. Still time to join a team, like tonight, and to be sponsored.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Najarian.
Let me make a comment. Just to build on what Dave and many others in the previous weeks have said, the Relay for Life is probably the most significant event that the city puts on. It is a celebration of life. It's a party. It's a common attempt and search for the cure for cancer. It brings the community together. It commemorates those who have passed. It celebrates those who are fighting cancer. It's a way to get together with your neighbors. And I didn't know what the Relay for Life was initially, until I went last year, but what it is, and I think someone needs to spell it out for those people who might be a little apprehensive about it. If you have to go to one city event all year, this is the event to go to. It is by far the best event that the city does, the most worthwhile. Bring a tent. You pitch your tent on a wide-open green field. There's music, nonstop, entertainment, nonstop. There's walking around the track, and it's a walkathon in some respect, where you generate money for cancer. All the food is handled. You get a chance to meet not only your neighbors, but you get a chance to meet city staff, city councilmen. Your children have a play area. You don't have to worry about the kids or babysitters. There's a kids camp, which is just wonderful. The entire place is fenced off, so your kids aren't going to run away. There's police and fire, and every sort of service that you would need. Well-lit bathrooms, clean, plenty of water, and it goes throughout the night. And it's a nonstop 24-hour celebration of life. And in the morning, you look at your friends and neighbors, and you feel like you've really gone through something that you can be proud of. You've done it for one of the best causes out there. And it brings the community together like nothing else. And I strongly encourage everyone, please, if you haven't formed a team, just call our office. You saw the flyer earlier. It's the greatest thing you can do, and you'll feel so good after you do it. And you will be hooked on it, and you will be waiting, you know, Sunday morning, you'll be saying, I can't wait until the next one in 364 more days. It's that great of an event, and it is a tribute to our planners, Dave, and everyone, Linda, for putting a lot of time and effort into this. It is just fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Speaker Ray Galloway, followed by Margaret Stepp.
Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, and public. I was hoping to address you on the night that the ordinance was to be voted on, but unfortunately, I'm going to be out of town for the entire month of October, so I'll take the opportunity that I have tonight. The times that we could cook our kill over a fire pit in front of our cave have passed. Our fragile planet is suffering from the burdens placed upon it by our lack of concern. Southern California in particular is impacted by overpopulation. On a personal note, I'm doing my part. I'm leaving for West Virginia. Unfortunately for you guys, Margaret Hammond is not going with me.
I thought that was just a rumor, but I guess I was wrong.
You can't believe the rumors. We've established that. I'm being told that the reason for this ordinance is to legalize grilling, which has been a 10-year, which has a 10-year history of flouting the law, is that, quote, "Some members of our community want to do it," unquote. Well, for better or for worse, we're in an age, a stage in our society, where "I want to do it" can't always be accommodated. I'd like to have a miniature donkey in my backyard, but I know if I did that, my ass would be in jail. The animal.
Yeah, we got it.
Yeah, okay. The state of California has recently taken steps to become a leader in controlling air pollution. Sadly, Glendale is choosing to regress to the days of the caveman. I think Mr. Najarian understands this. He predicted last week that the time is coming when higher jurisdictions will prohibit what you gentlemen are about to endorse. I admit that I'm tilting at windmills to attempt to stop you from approving this ordinance, but it is you, in the long run, who are doing just that, tilting at windmills. It would be great if Glendale could be in front of the curve on this one. Thank you.
Next speaker is Margaret Stepp, followed by John Muir.
Mayor Weaver, am I on here? Barry Weaver, city council members, staff, and members of the public. My name is Margaret Stepp, and I have lived in Glendale for 29 years. Glendale's a city that's always been proud of its quality of life, and good air quality is a vital part of that. The proposed ordinance allowing businesses to operate outdoor grills would degrade Glendale's air by increasing chemical air pollution and particulates and smoke. I strongly urge each one of you to vote wisely and courageously against this ordinance. With small and large restaurants, grocery stores, delis, fast-food outlets, and banquet halls throughout Glendale, all able to grill outside all day, every day, this ordinance would impact literally thousands of people. Glendale's citizens and visitors would step outside, or even just open a window each day, to find that the breezes that had previously brought fresh air would now bring the constant smell of meat and fish grilling mornings, afternoons, evenings, and nights. This could easily happen 365 days a year. We do not want Glendale to become known as the city that smells like a barbecue. My neighborhood already occasionally has problems with the odor of grilling meat and fish from businesses a few blocks away, much further than 200 feet. We know personally how unpleasant and unhealthy that air pollution can be. For many hours, we can't go outside without smoke, and the odor comes in the windows. The impact is far beyond any neighbor residential barbecuing. The commercial outdoor grilling ordinance is bad for the respected city of Glendale. I understand the pressures you may be under, but I respectfully ask each of you to show your wisdom and courageously vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
............
In the area, it's a little off Glendale Avenue.
Next speaker, John Muir, followed by Bessie Rhodes.
Good evening. My name is John Muir, and I'm a Glendale resident. I'm also a member of the Glendale Alliance, a nonpartisan political organization representing residents from all areas of Glendale, including the lynch mobbers over on Howard Street and the nuts up in Chevy Chase Canyon. The Glendale Alliance was formed because there's a perception that this council cares little for the input of ordinary Glendaleians and favors the developer community over the interests of our residents and small business owners. This perception has been fueled by a string of controversial decisions by this council that seems to fly in the face of community input, and with some frequency, staff council. This perception has been fueled by a series of attacks on speakers by council for exercising their right to be heard regarding issues they deem to be important regarding the quality of life in Glendale. This perception has been fueled by the arbitrary limiting of time for resident input while allowing council members an unlimited amount of time to present their arguments for or against a specific issue. This perception has been fueled by the arrogance of council members to frame ordinances for the specific benefit of their financial supporters. The list could go on and on. Certainly, before I came up here today, there were a lot more. Today's community forum in the Glendale news press contains four articles that further question the motives of this council. Mr. Milano was recently chastised in these chambers for being a lone voice, a voice that lacked a constituency. While the Glendale Alliance does not support all of Mr. Milano's agenda, we do support his right to question this council on city matters, and we sympathize with him on the lack of answers in response to his queries. We also join with the recently formed Friends of Mountain Oaks in their quest to ascertain why Glendale needs less open space and more condos. The Glendale Alliance is made up of a cross-section of this city's residents and small business owners. We do have a constituency and a responsibility to that constituency to promote true representation in our local government. We intend to live up to that responsibility and urge this council to fairly consider all resident and business interests, not just those of a limited group of financial supporters. We'll encourage our members to become involved in city affairs through education and advocacy. We hope our efforts will energize voters next April. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Bessie Rhodes.
Mayor and council members and staff, I'm here about my water bill.
Could you just give your name for the record, please?
I beg your pardon?
Your name for the record, please. Your name.
Bessie Rhodes.
Thank you.
And we've lived, where we do now, since about January 1971, we moved. So we've lived there almost 36 years. And my water bill for this year, each bill was approximately more or less $120, I mean, give or take $2, $3. I opened up my last bill, it was $798.23, and I... was $798.23. And I called the company on the 14th of this month, and they said that they would send somebody out the next day, which they evidently did. And when they came out, they said, well, even since he had read it before, they had read it before, that it had gone up again. It was up, you know, more than it, than it had been. There's no way possible. I'm alone there. My sister passed away with cancer in April. I'm alone. There's no way possible that I could use that much water. Now, the people that live, I live at 921 Geneva Street.
Wait, wait, you don't have the Tulsa address.
And the people across the street at 922 just got in a pool. I think they got the meters mixed up somehow, and they read them.
Could be. When you're done, I'm going to ask for your phone number so staff can reach you.
I can't understand you, Mayor.
I'm going to, when you're done, I'm going to ask for your phone number on the card so the staff can reach you tomorrow to, so we can check this out, okay? I don't know if you're done. You can continue to talk, but we'll check it out tomorrow. Something is definitely wrong. Understand? Something is definitely wrong.
Yeah, there's definitely something wrong. And two, just last Thursday, a neighbor lifted the lid, you know, to read the meter, and nothing was going. Now, if I was using that much water, there was a leak. They keep saying there's a leak. We've checked everything. There's no leak anyplace, and nothing was moving. I mean, the little dial that should be moving wasn't moving. I wasn't home. Now, if it was, there was a leak, the dial would be going, and it isn't. So, I mean, something definitely has to be wrong.
Mrs. Starburg.
We'll have somebody from my staff work with GWP and check again and see what might be happening out there.
Yeah. We'll check into it tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
Rest assured.
I paid them. I said, I'll pay you $120. That's what I usually pay. And I sent it, and I've sent it in.
Rhodes, young lady, we'll get your telephone number. Before you leave, we'll be in contact with you, okay?
Don't pay anything until we get this drained out.
My utility bill doubled last period as well, doubled. So, I don't know whether...
Well, this is 100, 700.
Yeah, I know. That's considerable.
High bills during the summer, including electrical, were not unusual. If this is indeed just water, that's a tremendous amount of water. It may be your total bill, but we'll, we'll get with her.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming down.
That sounded unusual.
Okay. Believe it or not, our communications is closed. What is next, please?
Well, since seven has been moved, to date certain, at 8:00 a.m., is action item, Director of Administrative Services Regarding Utility Users Tax: UUT Exemption for Low-Income Individuals with Disabilities. At 8:00 a.m., motion instructing staff to prepare an ordinance expanding UUT exemptions to low-income individuals with disabilities.
Mrs. Starburg.
Yes, let me go to Bob Franz, Director of Administrative Services, for the staff report.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yusefian.
I have a question from the city attorney. If this ordinance passes, one of my close relatives will be eligible for this program. Would that, considering the numbers are so low, would that not allow me to vote on this? Will there be a conflict?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, it would not be a legal conflict of interest, but you need to explore within your own mind whether or not you consider that to be an ethical issue.
Yeah. And considering the fact that we had this morning an issue, so under that circumstances, I think I will abstain from voting on this.
Does he have to leave the room?
Well, no. Actually, you only are required to leave the dais if you have a financial conflict of interest.
I don't have a financial, so I'll keep my mouth shut.
Government code, parable brackets.
Thank you. Mr. Manukian.
Well, just for the record, I have a number of relatives in Glendale that could...
Uh-oh, this is getting dangerous. How many votes do we need?
Understand that this ordinance, well, the options here, applied individuals with disabilities and age and income, so there are three criteria. If you're telling me that you've got individuals, individual family members that could benefit by this ordinance, you're going to be in the same position as Mr. Yusefian is. But if all of you are like that, then...
How close a family member they need to be?
Well, it's not a matter of how close they need to be. Again, it's not a violation of law. It's really an ethical issue to determine whether or not you feel they're close enough that you can't render a fair decision. Or you feel uncomfortable in deciding whether or not to approve a particular option because it might affect your family member favorably.
Okay. I'll have to look, I'll have to explore it and look into it, I guess.
Well, you're either in or out of the conversation.
Well, there's a number of people that could be affected by it.
Since this is not a financial conflict, the ability to participate remains. Ethical issues are...
How many votes would you need for?
This is a majority vote. Three affirmative votes. And again, this is not, this is direction to staff to prepare an ordinance. There is no ordinance before you tonight.
So, just to be safe, I will not discuss or say anything regarding this issue.
Mr. Cantaro, Mr. Najarian, do either one of you have any relatives that qualify?
Would you qualify for this thing?
No, I'm not disabled. Well, mentally, maybe, but...
That's a self-declaration.
Excuse me, it sure is. No, no, I'm the oldest one around in my family, so. Okay, you've got three people that'll listen to you.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, this was a request to prepare a alternative for the council to review and consider for providing an exemption from paying utility users' tax for persons with disabilities. What we've done is outline four options for you to review. Just as way of background, the city currently provides a discount for Glendale Water and Power customers over age 55 or over who have a disability and a medical verification. And on the utility users' tax, we do not provide such an exemption or discount for paying utility tax. We've outlined one alternative, which would be to take the existing program, Glendale Water and Power program, and extend to those individuals on that program an exemption from paying utility users' tax on their water and power bill. That's option one. And that is the recommended staff alternative, which I'll get to at the end of my comments on why we're selecting that alternative.
Mr. Mayor, if I can quickly note, it's the recommended option if the council chooses to provide a further discount. Staff's not recommending you implement the discount, but if indeed you choose to, that's the option we'd recommend you follow.
And Mr. Franz, about how much would that be in terms of the individuals receiving the discount? Is it $10 a month, 12, 7?
Our estimates are about $50 a year, so it's about $4 a month. And that's based on some data from Glendale Water and Power. They do review the utility bills, not all of the utility bills of their customers who qualify for the program, but we've had to use some estimates. So, that's option one. Option two would be to, for that same group, exempt them from paying utility users' tax on all utilities, water, power, gas, cable, TV, and telephone. The third option...
Once again, how much would that be, do you think?
About $165 per year. So, it's 14, 15, $14 a month on the average. The third option that we outlined would be to, instead of age 55 and over, to exempt households, low-income households with a person with disabilities age 18 or over. That is where it becomes very difficult for us to prepare estimates of the number of people. We've used some census data. We've used some data from our community development and housing program. So, that obviously expands the number of households that would potentially be eligible for the exemption. Again, we've provided two approaches on the, on that concept of the larger group. One is exempt that group from utility tax on water and power only. And then, option four would be for exemption from all utilities. The range of general fund impacts from option one, estimated general fund revenue loss per year of about $25,000 to the widest exemption would be $330,000 a year. And that's, by the way, the option three or four, as I, to repeat, is ones where we have the least confidence in our estimates because it's just very difficult to get numbers. Under, on page four, we've listed some discussion items on why we've selected the option which is the narrowest, and that is that we, these are, number one, these are just estimates. It's very difficult until you actually get into a program to know the experience. Number two, any general fund revenue loss is a concern for the city. As you know, we have threats to our utility tax revenue independent of taking a policy action such as this that would reduce revenue. Legal constraints, we've tried to outline what we have some concerns about under state law. If you go too broad of an exemption, you may have constraints on narrowing it later if you find out that it's not workable for one reason or another. Coordination with other utilities, if you go beyond water and power for the exemption, that means we have to coordinate with all of those other utilities. It used to be a little easier. You coordinate with Southern California Gas, your cable company, and a telephone company. Now, there are over 100 telephone companies remitting utility tax to the city. So, that's 100 companies we'd have to coordinate with. We have a new utility taxpayer on the horizon for cable TV. And then, lastly, just the administrative costs and expertise. If we're going to implement an exemption program, what we're saying with this recommendation is start out, start out slow, let us get some experience with it. If later, there's a desire to expand it to a broader group, then that is the recommended approach is to, because of all of those reasons we listed under the discussion. That concludes the staff report. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to try to answer those.
Mr. Cantaro.
Well, I agree with you. I think we have to stick with GWP. That's going to be the most manageable way to do it. And then, I would like to see some type of criteria in terms of delineating who is a disabled person, like, for instance, Long Beach, Pasadena, Torrance. They go with either the SSI program for the age blind and disabled, or perhaps even a licensed physician who would attest to the applicant's permanent disability. So, those are the two things I'd like to have incorporated.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Najarian.
I also think going with option one would be the most judicious approach to this at this point. Number one, it's the approach that I believe Bonnie Adams had raised her concern over. Number two, I think it's going to give us, because they're just estimating the number of folks that are going to apply for this program, I think it will give us a good handle as to how many folks with disabilities and meeting the income and age criteria are out there. And then, we could adjust it and be more liberal with our exemptions as we look into the future, as opposed to being more generous at first. We will have a problem, as I understand it, to, should we decide to cut back on that, that can be seen as imposing a new tax, which would raise some other issues with Prop 218. So, as a first step, I would support the option one that Mr. Cantaro raised and which staff has proposed.
Thank you. I do have cards. Okay, listen, the speakers, three minutes. Dr. Richard Spirito, followed by Bonnie Adams.
Good evening, Mayor Weaver, city council, and staff. Mr. Najarian, you said the Walk for Life was one of the most worthy, worthwhile endeavors that the city does. I believe this ordinance is also one. Mr. Manukian, a long time ago, when we were back in studying geometry, algebra, there was an equation to figure out an unknown, A over B times X over C. We have some interesting figures here. We have in the report, information from the, from staff saying that there are 42,000, 42,000 people with disabilities, which represents 21.7% of the population. The staff estimates a maximum enrollment of 2,000. Now, if you take the population, which is all in your staff report, times 64%, which is between 21 and 64, times 14% below the poverty level, that comes out to 5,947. Question one, are you only going to allow 2,000 people in this program? Under option one, you stated that there are 500 households. Under option four, you're saying that it's going to cost us some money, and there's going to be some money, a lot less, but he paid out, under option one. If you can spend $6 million for open space, why can't we spend $330,000 a year for the disabled? One of the other questions that I, that I wanted to raise was, why is this, what is the city criteria? Mr. Cantaro raised this. Who will determine what will be the issue? Are people with cancer going to be in...
Have you got much, have you got much more, Dr. Spirito?
No.
Because it was three minutes.
Okay. Will people with cancer be included in this exemption? If not, why are we even having the Relay for Life? You talked about the difference with people with cancer. The last question is, I believe, why invent the wheel? Why don't we just look at Pasadena and Burbank's policies and programs and implement those?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bonnie Adams.
You guys don't even need to do that. To apply for some of these programs, you have to have physician's notes, everything. That stuff's all in place. You have to, I'm Bonnie Adams, by the way. You have to, you have to hand in a lot of information to apply, even to get into some of these programs. You can go to your housing development, you can go to your physicians. And some of, these numbers are skewed because a lot of these disabled people are not even going to fit the income guidelines because they're, they may, they may have a good little nest egg that they live on, and they're, they're okay. And what you may also check is the fact, who are living in high buildings, and are they getting their utilities paid? Because if they are, they're not eligible either. Now, I'm going for, I'd like to see option four, because you have kids coming up that are going out on their own, that are trying to find employment, and employment opportunities are not easy for disabled people as they are for able-bodied people. I mean, if, if one of you and I were going for the same job, who do you think they'd hire? Bearing in mind that we have the same qualifications and the same, there's no difference. We just have the same, who do you think they'd hire? They'd hire you. Because I can't see, and they can take anyone off the street that they want and, and give them, they don't have to train them as long as they don't have to provide adaptive equipment. They don't have to do anything. So, there's, as many people as there may be living here in Glendale below the poverty line, you, since you're not sure of the numbers, I'm still going for option four because you have these young adults that are trying to be contributing members of society, and they really are trying to be contributing members of the community and pay their taxes and do the things as well as anybody else. Give them a break. Give me a break. The income doesn't change, but the outgo goes up. The income doesn't change, but the outgo goes up, and the income does not change. There has to be, there has to be something here. It's very expensive here to live in Glendale. Thank you. And I just would like to ask Mr. Najarian a question. Mr. Najarian, is there a rumor going around that Bus 183 and 184 are going to be closed? Are they going to be taken off the route?
That's far as we know, Mr. Najarian.
I would be happy to contact you about that, Bonnie, but I can't really.
Would you please, because that's?
183 and 184, I'll look into it.
183 and 184 are going to affect San Fernando Road?
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I have no more cards. Is there a motion or a discussion?
Let me just say that option four, just to make sure the public understands, that means that the city of Glendale's employees would have to coordinate and get cooperation from the Southern California Gas Company, Charter Cable, the many telecommunications companies doing business in Glendale, and verifying their list, billing contractors. So I don't see that as, as the way to go. We, we control Glendale Water and Power, and I think that's what makes the most, the most sense.
Will you make your motion?
I'll move option one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers Mnuchin?
Epstein.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
State.
Mayor Weaver?
Hi. What's next, please?
9A was moved to date certain. 9B is hearing director of planning regarding tentative track number 063273, Glendale Adventist Medical Center, located at 1505, 1509 Wilson Terrace, and 1500, 1530, 1554, 1558, 1574, 1578, East Chevy Chase Drive, 262, 264, 304, 312, and 322 Sinclair Avenue. 91, motion approving tentative track map. And 9B2, motion confirming the matter to prepare findings to deny the tentative track map.
Okay, Mr. Darby, what can you tell me about the place I was born?
Well, it's probably changed a lot since you were there.
Maybe they made a mistake.
I will actually ask Lane Mulker, Director of Planning, to give you this time.
Send me to Burbank.
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of council, if you'd like, we have a short PowerPoint presentation, which you receive copies of, if, if you'd like to see that. Otherwise, we could just have.
I have, no, I have to have one card, is that if needed?
This is a particularly technical matter. It's to rearrange the lot lines of the Glendale Adventist Hospital and Medical Center so that it'll make sense of what is presently a very complicated overlay of lot activities over the years. This would make it very much simpler for them, and was actually started because of the need to do some financing on one portion of the property, and staff suggested, let's make sense of it. And, and that's the purpose. It was recommended by planning commission after consideration.
Okay, it is a public hearing.
You want to open and close it?
I'll open it, and I'll close it. Mr. Yusefian?
I'll move 9B2. 9B1.
Second.
Yeah, I'll second.
9B1.
Okay. I'll just make one comment out of that. For those of you that travel on Harvey Drive, between there and Wilson, there's going to be a traffic signal put on next, that exits Minx and In-N-Out Burger, so traffic can finally move in that location. That's a nightmare there.
That's been a while in coming, actually, and a number of individuals in the community have approached me and asked me, when is that going to happen?
Well, six to eight months, from what I hear.
Well, it's the wheels of government turning.
It's a mitigation measure in the environmental documents.
Adventist is going to build it.
Adventist is, you can thank Glendale Adventist for this one.
I might go to In-N-Out tonight.
As you go to In-N-Out Burger, you can thank the hospital.
Make sure that.
I hope they're synchronized, because.
Well, they're going to be synchronized. They're all Caltrans-operated, so they'll all be synchronized, and maybe the traffic will finally move through there. Okay, with that, other than roll call.
Councilmembers Mnuchin?
Yes.
Najarian?
Epstein.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Weaver?
Hi. Epstein, were you born there? No. I think about you, I was born there. Okay.
Kansas Reports Information, Attenté as Director of Public Works, regarding SR 134, Sound Walls Between Harvey Drive and Louise Street Project Presentation, report offered by the LA Metro.
I think I'm going straight to Kathleen Sanchez.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to talk about all the other links that aren't in, that people send us emails about.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and city staff members. My name is Kathleen Sanchez. I'm Transportation Planning Manager for Metro. I'm also the Planning Project Manager for this sound wall project. Most of the sound walls that are being constructed are, Metro manages the funding for the, for this construction projects, but Caltrans lets the contracts and manages the work. After we did the noise studies for this project a few years ago, Metro and Caltrans together decided that this might be an ideal candidate for an experimental construction contracting project, which is called a design-build contract. Caltrans itself cannot, cannot do this type of work based on their, their state regulations. So they asked Metro to, to do this project as, like I said, as a test case. So, this is a, the noise studies for this project were done first in 2002, and we updated them in October of 2004. And I know the citizens of the city and the city staff have been waiting a really long time for this wall, these walls to get constructed. The total project for this project, the total project budget for this is $11.4 million. We, Metro awarded a design-build contract in December of '05 for $9 million for the construction work itself. And the project is in design right now. We anticipate construction to start towards the end of this year. The, the project will consist of 10 new walls along the 134 freeway, on both sides of the freeway, between Louise and Harvey and the city limits. Seven of the walls were, will be located adjacent to property lines. Generally, they will be located between 4 and 10 feet away from the property. Three of the walls will be located on the freeway shoulder. The wall heights, as you can see, will range from 17 feet to 16 feet. The heights are based primarily on the approved noise study, but also on, it's determined also by the heights of the slope and, slope and height of the embankment, excuse me. The, the walls will be 2,310 meters worth of length, and we will have about a one-year construction period once we start. The contractor is supposed to be done by November of '07. This is the aerial view that we have of the, of the project. Unfortunately, it's really hard to see on this scale. And I believe the city staff has an aerial that's mounted. We borrowed it, we have it at our office right now, but I didn't bring it with me tonight. We're going to be having a community meeting Thursday night, and we will have the board there for, for the community members to see. The community members also want to know, of course, what the wall will look like, and it's going to be the same material, the same texture as the adjacent walls already constructed along certain segments of this freeway. So it will be the standard concrete block split face, so we will have the rough texture, which will be on both sides of the wall, on the freeway side and also on the residential or community side. It's just a close-up of it. The typical section of the construction, the wall will be at least 150 millimeters away from the right-of-way line. And you can see that some of the community members wanted to see how the construction would be, and you can see that it's a pile drilled into the ground with the wall mounted on top. There will be no footings on anybody's private property at all. All of the construction facilities will be on Caltrans property. And these are just some typical profiles to show how the, where the wall will be in comparison to the freeway and to the property lines, whether it's on an embankment or adjacent to the, I mean, on the freeway shoulder or adjacent to the property lines. And then I will go through a series of slides here, just showing where the walls are throughout the length of the project and where some segments will be higher than others, 9 feet to 14 feet. And like I said, these heights were determined based on the noise studies, so we didn't want to make them any higher than they were needing to be. So this just goes from west to east. We have a sequence of work, as I said, this is a design-build project, so the contractor has the right to sequence the work in any manner that he chooses, making it the most economical project for him. We have, Metro has been working with Caltrans to acquire temporary construction easements where necessary, so that the contractor can access private property to remove some, some of the residential improvements as necessary, or do some, just to access the right-of-way from the backside of the properties. We're working, like I said, on getting the temporary construction easements right now. We're trying to get all of them on one side or the other, north or south, so that the contractor can finish the design of the wall and get started on construction as soon as possible. Each wall segment will take about 40 to 45 days to construct, and likely they will start at one end, whether it be east or west, and, and do the work consecutively, working on one segment and then moving on to the next segment. They will be required to give every property owner 14 days' notice prior to construction. The property owners have already all been contacted because of the, they've been given community notices, and then also the people that we need to get the temporary construction easements from have also all been contacted. So residents along the right-of-way there know that this is coming. The contractor will be required to notify and work with the city to determine the hall routes for the, removing the material during construction. As we've seen other construction work done on other segments of, say, the 101 freeway, you see the scaffolding on the freeway side, that's, that's probably where they will be when they're constructing it, doing the wall construction itself. And then, the, as I said, the footings will all be on a Caltrans property. We've already contacted the property owners, who will also have to have trees or other improvements removed. We've come to, we're, we are negotiating with them for the value of the improvements that would be removed if they are not to be replaced. If they can be replaced, we will, or if they prefer that they be replaced, then we would also do that. And like I said, we hope to begin construction towards the end of the year, October or November. But the project is still in the design mode, so it may be a little bit later before they can get started. Because it's a segmented project, we're, we're encouraging the contractor to design the wall portion first. They're also going to be doing a bridge. That's taking longer to design, so we want them to get busy with what they can first. The Sinclair Avenue overpass will be, need to be torn down and rebuilt, the, the westbound portion of the bridge. It needs to be widened so that they can put, fit the sound wall on the side of it. Sinclair Avenue underneath there will be reduced to one lane in each direction during that construction. There will be plenty of signage. The community will be notified ahead of time. We'll be working with the city to provide all appropriate directions. And the construction itself for the bridge will take about six months once they get started. And that's the end of my presentation. Are there any questions?
So this is an experiment?
A test case.
Test case to find out if.
If.
If it's reduced in cost and time.
And time, exactly. You may have heard the discussion during budget, the state budget time, about the I-405 HOV lane, that they wanted to construct also, and Caltrans was not able to do that because of the, you know, their state legis, state guidelines. So we're working with Caltrans to also do something like that with.
What's the, what does the public think about you doing this? There's disruption. We always hear the criticism, when there's construction going on, you're disrupting, but is it generally understood that the benefits are going to be derived when the wall is up? Winsome over, say, yeah, we don't like it right now, but we see we're going to be able to sleep at night without freeway noise. Is that really?
Yeah, I would think definitely that is the case, because, and again, Caltrans has more experience with this than we do at Metro, but we're continually getting calls from residents, wondering when they're going to get their segment of sound wall if it's not part of this.
We get those.
Right.
We thought they'd be here tonight.
That's what I thought. And most of these calls have to go to Caltrans, and they make the determination as to where it fits on the priority list.
And that's the thing, it's a priority list that we work from.
Right.
So.
But.
Darby?
Couple of questions. In those locations where the sound walls are across a street from residential properties, which may be, looks like there may be a number of them along the south side in particular, is, is there enough right-of-way for there to be some form of landscaping, like creeping fig on the wall or something? Is landscaping any aspect of this project?
Yes, there is some landscaping contained, included in the project, but it's going to be Caltrans standard landscaping, which is not much. And will be irrigated. They'll be mostly putting in trees.
I just, I, I happen to be driving out along the 210 freeway, the new expansion, and was off in one of the neighborhoods in the Euclid area, and driving some of the frontage streets, frankly, trying to find my way back onto the freeway. But they have a number of areas there where they have residential across the street, and the sound wall is directly across the street.
Yeah.
In some areas where it seems to be at least 14 feet in height, then it becomes a rather imposing structure, even though it's across the street. And in some of those areas, there didn't seem to be any right-of-way for any landscaping to soften that wall, but there will be in some locations here where you have that situation?
Yes, there will be. And I'm, they'll be on the freeway side, though, not on the residential side that will have the landscaping.
Okay. Second question, again, out in some areas where we've seen newer freeways and sound walls, they seem to have a, a much higher level of design. You see a lot of really interesting approaches to getting away from the standard split-face block, which is the standard design. What, how, how does that come about in those communities?
As you know, those walls were constructed while the freeway was being constructed. So first off, that made it a lot easier to get the design incorporated. And as I understand it, some of the communities offered up additional funding to help pay for the over-cost.
See, I knew it. It's the catch.
Cost over what a split, standard split-face would cost. One of the features about this project was initially to encourage the use of alternative materials for the wall in this particular section. It ended up that, that there was, most, most of the designers wanted just to have a continuation of the same material that was already there, so it would be a consistency of appearance. And in addition, because it was a design-build, and the contractor was under a time constraint, we didn't, they didn't have the time to investigate the materials thoroughly and assure Caltrans that it would have the same noise reduction.
What are some alternative materials?
Well, there would be, there is a product, product called Quilite, which is some sort of a, a plastic material that's a box that's within a frame. Then there's also earthen-filled barriers, and some sort of straw material that they were looking at also. That might, you know, they still, the Caltrans is still interested in, in putting those things up as, those products up as experimental, but we decided Glendale needed that.
We ought to go for more experimental, that's what it takes.
Oh, I don't know.
I think, I think the residents will be happy to have something that's more consistent with.
I mean, for other, other areas, we can jump ahead in the priority by volunteering to be an experimental project.
I expect the only thing to get you to jumping ahead in priority is money. Local money.
I haven't heard of that.
I would imagine.
Well, thank you. Mr. Yusefian, you had a question for us?
I have a question. A while back, a speaker had brought up, and. A wide-based speaker had brought up an idea of having sound walls that are curved like this, instead of being straight.
Concave inward?
Yeah. When I went to China, I did not see the walls that were like this, but there were walls that were straight, but the top part was turned in toward the freeway. What's the purpose of that? Is it to turn the sound inwards into itself, to?
Sound only goes up.
It, it goes out.
It goes, it hits the wall, and it just goes up, so when you turn the top down, does it turn the sound back on itself and cancels itself out?
Thinking that's, that probably would be the thinking, it would, it would bounce up and then come back down, yes.
Could be aesthetics, too.
Going over.
And why haven't, I mean, has, has Caltrans looked at that? Have the scientists have looked at that?
I, I don't.
Or we just take one, we figure out one way, and we just keep on going?
It's Caltrans.
All right.
Yes, I don't know about that.
Say no more.
Thank you. But thank you for at least getting it done.
Thank you.
Appreciate that very much.
Mr. Najarian?
I think we, although I'm not sure of this, I think we probably owe a debt of thanks to Larry Zarian, during whose tenure at the MTA, this sound wall idea was, was initiated. And I think you can see how long it takes to, to get on the, the list of approved sound wall installation sites.
Many years.
As well as just taking a look at the cost of the, the sound wall, we're talking about one and a half miles that are costing $9 million. So, that's about $6 million a mile. And I think, to all you budding engineers and inventors out there, if you can come up with a, a better way to build these things, and avoid the, the extreme cost that, that is involved, I think you would certainly be rolling in dough in, in no time. And as far as, and you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, that there are other areas of the city that are, have requested this, and I can assure you that, as the MTA rep for the northern sector, I'm going to do everything I can to get those sound walls, particularly in the northern area, and hopefully, we won't have to wait at the end of the line.
You're a good man.
Despite.
Go for it.
Money, of course, boosting you up. The MTA is a very dynamic institution.
Really, really.
And stranger things have happened. So, I just wanted to put that out there. Do not despair, folks in the northern part, on the 210.
So, let's hope that you don't get the sound walls, and then you'll be gone, and a future council member will say that Mr. Najarian was the one who got the sound walls in. Let's hope it happens when you're still here.
And don't, and don't forget the ranchery, either.
I'll be around that.
Maybe you can contact Halliburton Corporation, they might be just the ones to.
Don't forget the ranchery, between western and.
Ranch, there are many areas that need sound.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, we're just a report. There's nothing else on that issue. What's next, please?
Is there a motion to adjourn in memory of Dr. Dave Wallace and Vartus Barson?
So, I'll move.
Second.
Thank you for taking the words out of my mouth. We're adjourned at 8:30.